So, uh, everybody, why don't we get started? Okay, so we're gonna get started. I can only assume there wasn't anything better to do today. The crowd is bad. The Magnette movie is nothing but, you know, people aren't glued to their TVs trying to find out has the car fire got 72% containment. I want to welcome everybody, it's really great to see so many folks here. So in case people don't know me, there might be somebody that doesn't, my name's Pat Frost, and because I wasn't paying attention somewhere along the line, I'm the facilitator. So we do have folks that I think people don't know or don't see often, so even though it takes up a few minutes, we'll do quick introductions just to make sure everybody knows who, to kind of start things off. So one thing I just asked Kelly was, so did anybody, and it was a stupid question actually, did anybody, did we get any requests for proxy? But clearly, we have everybody here. So, no, there, nobody was, that, nobody emailed and said, "I have the proxy for so-and-so." So let me ask though, did anybody here get a message from somebody who's not here that they are going to be the proxy for, for them? I mean, the only people I'm, I guess the only absence I'm seeing is the board supervisors who are missing so far. So I didn't hear from Judy or Terry Mines that they have anybody in mind for proxies at this point. So, other thing is that there's a very thorough collective memory, so from folks who were at the last meeting, if they have anything that they think is inaccurate or need to be changed, we'd love to know as far as the collective memory goes. Today, we don't have Marie, she's had a conflict, so Kelly is doing the note-taking for the meeting today. Other thing is at the beginning, so, you know, there's kind of time for public comment at this point in the agenda, and public comment at the very end of the meeting. So we do have a lot of public, after we get done with the introductions, we'll do a little bit of public comment, if there is any. There should be someone that says facilitator's comment, something for me to be able to throw something in. So, I only have one. So, the one that I have, I don't know how the June meeting went, but I wanted to thank Kelly for, you know, for facilitating in my absence in June when I was off wandering around South Dakota. But there is one thing that I do think that Kelly, we need to get Kelly some training. He may need to go to, I don't know what, Starbucks U or something like that, he needs to learn to make coffee so that they don't have to rely on him, but he's showing up and make coffee. Kelly doesn't know how to make coffee. So anyway, so maybe we'll find, maybe we just send you to Mama Llama's Red House, and stand there and kind of watch him for a little bit, how he's, he's the kid, he's the trainee, bump up his creds, you know, as a district manager. So anyway, with that said, quickly go around introductions, you know, without long essays about why you're here, just who you are and what you represent. So I said that because we're starting with Barry.
Barry Schur representing Northwest RCD.
Paul Henson, Trinity County.
Trent Cousins, Collab.
Mary Rose, Collab.
Daniel District Ranger Commander, Six Rivers County Forester.
Larry Glass, Safe.
Miss Andrew, Trinity.
Sally Cousins, Rec Officer, and she's not a member.
And you might know the representative of the Shasta Trinity National Forest. So anyway, we'll go to the back, we'll go to the back, kind of, Raymond.
Rick Patton, Representative of Wentz, OK.
Detective, Trinity County, Collaborative Member.
Christine Derriman, Intern with Sally and the Forester.
Ah, back to the.
Arnold, the Creator.
Susan Bauer.
Susan Bauer, Safe.
Terry King, Collab.
Danishing, long time, full-time Collaborative Member.
Florence Key.
Okay.
Ryan Richards, State Department.
Carol Ball, Collaborative, he's one of the two.
Back to the.
Susan Molino, Collaborative Member.
Ross Molino, Collaborative Member.
Lucky Leonard Ryan, Mom, Bar, State Council.
John Knight, Collaborative Member.
Tom Wolf, Sierra City.
Kay Graves.
John Allison.
Jennifer Nock, NRCS.
Nick Gulet, Forest Officer.
Judge Maria Ann, Beyond Running Field Office.
Sarah Ingrid, Resources Supervisor, Beyond Running Field Office.
Jake Morris, Trinity.
Kelly Anthony, Lieutenant, by our National Office and the County.
Paul Morris, Collaborative Member.
Kelly Singh, Trinity County Resource Conservation District.
Yeah, did that great. Again, so we don't, we didn't get any notices for proxies, but if you didn't, please make sure that you sign in, so that your, your status as a collaborative member, you know, remains valid, or if you're somebody in the wannabe category, you know, kind of, you've got, you know, the rules are, you've got to be here for two meetings as an observer before you can function as a member of the collaborative. And during the collaborative meetings, the public's, you know, opportunities again are at the very beginning and at the end to provide your input as a member of the public. So with that, I will, so before we do the public comment, and I guess I was gonna ask, you know, as we're putting together agendas every time, you know, we do the best we can to send out emails to all the agencies and say, "What do you got to put on the agenda?" You know, depending on, you know, what's going on, you know, we get like comments back, and sometimes we get nothing back. This time certainly with the car fire, you know, and other, other fires, it's been difficult to get, you know, have a lot of communication with the agencies. From anybody, are there, from any collaborative member or agency member, are there any time-sensitive issues that we didn't capture in the agenda that we need to make sure that we deal with today? Time-sensitive in my mind means, we need action before we meet again in October, right? Because our next meetings would be the third Friday in October. So, I think we got, whatever it was, Acre Woods. You know, project from Six Rivers. We didn't hear anything, Sally, from anybody, you know, from Tom, or Joe, or Scott, or, you know, anybody, or Leslie, but you didn't hear anything else that's time-sensitive on the BLM side? Is there anything that needs, or action input before October?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, so, this is the opportunity, and we'll try to keep it reasonably short, because we're a little bit behind where I thought we'd be, because we started a little late. So any public observations? Do you want to make a public observation?
I'm going to be a public today.
Okay. You're gonna be both a public and a collaborative?
Yes.
Okay.
So as a matter of fact, the public could, an informal survey concerning the Jared Huffman deal, and we, as the public, had, this is copies, we had them informally let us know whether they were for or against the Jared Huffman's deal, because it's been said that the public and everybody is for this bill, and obviously, as the weight inside, most people are not, the public is not. And we're also going to, and we have a map here that we showed them concerning the lands that also included a lot of the water, partial streams and stuff, of taking, taking lands from the public and not being able to use them. So I would like to give this to Larry Glass.
So if I might, if I might suggest, just for, you know, the old regulator government guy, would like to say that we probably ought to have a copy of it for kind of the collective files of the, of the collaborative, so we make sure we have it set too, and I can make a copy and then get it to, I guess Larry, I guess, so do you. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Diane Richards, I'll try and make this short, you know, I have time for that. But, something has come to my attention, I've been working with William Simpson from Siskiyou County, we have a very depleted deer population, down 2.2 million deer missing in action. We have a wasting disease that is spreading throughout the service populations, and it's due, some scientists that he's working with, the top scientists have developed, have realized that it's a pyron-based disease that's coming from that material in our, our pastures and our forests, and they're looking for ways to try and mitigate this, so we can build our deer population as well. Again, which is really important for browsing, grazing purposes, to get our fuel loads down. He's developed a program called the Wild Horse Fire Brigade, and that program, I don't know if you've heard about it, but he's been speaking with a lot of congressmen, and I've approached a few and spoken, they're very open to this. There's, in other words, to take wild horses, we have a small wild horse herd, but to take wild horses and put it into wilderness areas to help bring down these grasses, and it turns out that the wild horse population is immune to the pyron disease, and so they would basically eat the plant material that the deer are being infected with. He would like, he's asking through me to formally come and do a presentation to you. I mean, he's got, he's on top of this and has the best minds in the country behind him. The Southwest Oregon US Forest Service Regional, I think Forester or Ranger, but the Southwest Region is on board with this, so he's really, wants to expand it, and our wilderness area might be a good place, they're also proposing to the Six Rivers, so I'm hoping that you could get him on the agenda, that's my request, thank you.
So what was his, just about the?
William Simpson, I believe you also, I believe this is my tech information, so I do ask you, at least just give her a map, he's really got a great plan, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other forward comment? Oh, so I would note, we have another collaborative member just showed up in the form of Kenneth Wallman. Hey Kenneth, we already did introductions, that sort of thing. So, we do agenda building at the end of the meeting, so, I'll write it down to make sure we talk about that and where that might fit schedules as we go along, and I, yes.
Talk about the master stewardship.
Uh, yeah, we've got that to like talk about, why that wasn't here. And so, just, I had something, I mean, I hate to like lay extra work on the BLMers, but I do know, because I have been on the Northern California Resource Advisory Committee of the BLM, that wild horse issues are something that they're, they deal with quite a bit and are familiar with, wild horse populations, that sort of thing, so if the group decides they want to have some sort of discussion on that issue, it may be at some point that we might want to draw on, and I know it's not really, the Reading Office doesn't usually deal with it more, the Eagle Lake and some of the folks further to the, further to the east that have some interest in, knowledge of, Captain.
Well, actually, he's definitely done some of this communication, and there's 25,000 horses, states should be killed or sterilized at this point in the BLM, but the US Forest Service actually has 8,000, I think as well, I think they're in New Mexico or somewhere in the southwest. So he's, he knows where the ORC has made contact, and he wants to work with everybody. Really, he's got a great plan, I'm just hoping that we need to be part of that, to be good to our, to our collaborative.
Okay. Okay, and any, any other public commenty kind of things? So I had two things, other things to mention, one is, I think I noticed in Trinity Journal Wednesday that you have a new boss, right? You have a new supervisor? So certainly, we need to, you know, reach out, you know, he starts in early September, and invite him to meet with us and get to know us and that sort of thing, so probably use you, Dan, to help make that happen.
Sure will.
And then, then the other is that after the, after the amended agenda went out, we still realize, you know, there's, you know, there's an issue that you all brought up in your June meeting, that you wanted to be brought up at this meeting, that is not on the agenda, and that has to do with utilization, Forest Service using master stewardship agreements to get more of this done. And Nick and Kelly and I got together, and some of you may recall, last winter, we had a fellow here from another nonprofit over in the Sierra Side, that is, that their, their nonprofit has a program where they kind of help to try to coordinate, so collaborate, coordinate collaboratives to better do the job of collaborative work better. And so we're having a meeting of kind of California, Northern California collaboratives in either late October or early November, and so we thought that before we came forward with a discussion on how we could be using master stewardship agreements more effectively, we might, the three of us might want to learn what other, what other collaborators and other forests are doing, so that we can bring a more complete picture of, of the use of master stewardship agreements. Originally, that meeting was going to be the 12th and 13th of October, which would have been perfect for our October meeting, it may get pushed to early November, so that master stewardship, that bigger discussion, you know, might, because we may want, like some of the folks that are using them to help us with our discussion, so it could be the December meeting before we get to that. If that's too, if that's too much foot dragging, we'll put something together for later, just add to it as we learn more. But anyway, that's why that particular agenda item didn't make it on, we just felt we were not informed well enough, and probably as it turns out, you know, that's probably not in, you know, in the wheelhouse of Sally, who's the only person, oh, Shasta Trinity, you know, we probably need their grants and agreements, we need their people who do that nuts and boltsy kind of agreement kind of stuff to be able to bring in.
So anyway. There's a very specific person that you have to use, because regular grants and agreements can't do the master stewardship agreements.
Right, it has a regional office.
Actually, it's provincial one, you know, it's asthma and.
Oh, she left the forest.
Did she? Okay, so we have nobody. But she did do our master stewardship agreement for one of our other collaboratives.
Okay. Yeah, and there are other examples, Nick has been talking to folks over in last, and that sort of thing, so, you know, we'll, we'll be able to bring a better discussion at a later meeting. Larry.
And the difference between your typical stewardship agreements and contracts versus the master stewardship agreement?
Yes.
The typical ones are for projects, a specific project, a short-term versus a 10-year now, maybe 20-year project.
Right, yes, yeah, so they're, they're a different beast. So, we put the next agenda item on, because I knew that no matter what we did today, and what we talked about today, you know, probably the first question that we'd get on any topic would be, and so how, how the fires, you know, affecting this project or that project in the process. So we put this item on, not knowing who it would be, who could best kind of give the group an over, quick overview of what the status is, primarily of the car fire, but other fires that are, you know, tapping resources, you know, that are important to us, so, I don't know if that, is you Sally, do you have something? Maybe it's some of you who have been out there on the ground dealing with it.
I don't have fire information, but I can just say that any of our specialists, and a lot of our employees are out on these fires right now, so, our archaeologist is out, our fish tanks are out, when people are out, which doesn't affect our productivity. All of the ranges are out.
All the, yeah. Tom, because I, I saw your picture, you know, with, with a map on, on the hood of a truck, that he wasn't a truck.
Yeah, the car fire is, is winding down, the only corner of it that is still has active burning is in, we call it the northeast corner, basically Shasta Lake, Dog Creek, south to Dog Creek, Shasta Lake over towards the, oh, the Behemoth Ash Mountain, basically that's southwest of Shasta Lake, and that has all had a black line burned on it, and it's just kind of burning together, and so the active part is theoretically contained by the lake and by a large black line, so anticipate that that's going to just burn itself out over the next two weeks of smoke that we're still have, probably will take some burning out. Don't anticipate any increased size of the car fire, they think they have pretty good perimeter burnouts on it. In terms of ramen.
Probably should have fined for that.
Good reminder. If we like, yesterday, what we could get into, and if I'd be considering a hot fire that burned, a model burned on north slopes, or whatever, it was an active fire, but where it, where it went, it turned to a run south slope, and it's burning during the daytime conditions, it pretty well cooked everything off. Sierra Pacific had within the 207, 210,000 acreage of the car fire, we had about 30,000 acres go off, unfortunately, about 12,000 of that was plantations, young trees, that really didn't have any merchantable within in that, so we're looking at about 18,000 acres that had fire go through that were considered to salvage. Most of that is on the Reddick district, because it's on the east side of Trinity County, or in Shasta County. On my district, fire went through about 2,000 acres, we're considering salvage, I'm probably well integrated that, or so, and the rest of the plantations are firmly cooling out, and we don't think we have salvage yet. So we're, we're actually getting very close to submitting our first emergency notice, we've been out fighting creeks and property lines and tractor cable owners and stuff, so we anticipate by, hopefully, if, if fire, if we put it into the fire area, we hope we can start the first.
How about on the BLM side, could you go dive his league? Oh, you have a map?
I have a map, so, let's see that. All right, so our state is a little BLM-focused, but we have, this is about yesterday, we had at that point, a little over 60,000 acres of land had been burnt. Our folks have largely been out advising the team as resource advisors, to sort of help identify good areas for dozer land and things like that. I know Tricia was doing some work yesterday on how many miles of dozer land have on the BLM.
Yeah, I think not including existing roads, we had about 100 miles roughly of completed dozer land, BLM.
So, that's obviously just BLM, so there's a lot more on the broader landscape, but they are working with the team on doing suppression repair activities now, and we also have a national bear team looking at emergency stabilization measures jointly with the Park Service, and I believe the Forest Service as well, so we can have sort of one team looking at all of the federal lands to make sure that, we're looking at public safety measures going into the rainy season. From a salvage perspective, we are starting to evaluate that, we are getting help from other foresters in BLM California, and potentially Oregon, to look at that, we don't have any like numbers on forty feet or acres yet, but we will be looking at that, especially near road sides for public safety. Let's see, anything else to require, any questions?
Go ahead, Kyle, it's a comment, yesterday I was out on the mainline road up there at Buckhorn Summit, and that's a road that was, it's been long established, and it was recently used as a log haul road, and last season, the RCD crew went in there and checked, you know, a buffer on either side, maybe an fuel rig, they go, and maybe they went 50, 75, I think.
75, I think, that's the max.
And that road was used as a control line for the fire crews, so it really just brings home evidence to us that, you know, our goal of pilot project, and these fuel rigs can be, and aids the firefighters if they, you know, if they didn't have the equipment and trying to catch and use them.
Kenneth.
Did the fire get into that area that was logged last year, and so what?
You mean in Grass Valley?
In Grass Valley, and what?
It did get into Grass Valley Creek, I'm not familiar with the area that was logged last year, so I know it didn't, it didn't work out, but it did work in the portion of the solution, but that's, that's something that we can back up.
I'm curious about that, because I don't think it's flash, it's just both. It wasn't, and I couldn't get up that far, I got a feeling that it was burning.
Actually, where they made the two great, big, huge landing piles, they built a fire line around those and burned out from them, so it was two big landing piles, did not burn off, and, and so, and most of the logging was done west of the burnout, so the eastern portion of that fire was backing down to it, but it burned it out and not been off, so I don't think the fire went through many phases of log pressure going through.
Good, so maybe by October, you know, we could have some, you know, some maps that showed some of that kind of stuff, you know.
Yeah, and we did see that a number of our previous fuels treatments, like up around the Holy Peet area, did well with fires.
Bob, then Kenneth, then Tom, or Tom, do you have comments specifically?
Bob, we talked about after action, future, the Grass Valley, too, so.
Yes.
Kenneth.
So the last fire map I saw was, was last, yesterday, it showed a little bit of a line that was not contained by county line, rode south to the east of the Wood June, is that still?
This here?
Yeah. Yeah, there's no record.
So this is probably from, I pulled data, the data that was compiled, it would have been around midnight Wednesday, I suppose, probably that's the, I may have, it's probably the same, I'm not sure if this thing.
And for, for those of you who are watching on the, on the, on your phones and stuff, when they show a red line, that doesn't mean that there isn't, that it's an uncontained line, that's just a portion of the line that hasn't been mopped up within 150 feet of the line, so when you see the black, that's all been mopped up within 150 feet, the red just means they have a contained line, they don't expect a fire going through, but it hasn't been mopped.
So they're still working, they're, yeah.
Didn't mop off within 150 feet or whatever. But my question, if I'm next to mine.
Oh, yeah.
The Holy Peet Road, is that actually a county road, or is that a BLM road?
That's an interesting question, I feel like we've had probably 20 conversations in the last day, of like, oh, these culprits are all on our guys, is that county or is that the other?
It's even more complicated, it's not against us, which county do you, any problem?
According to the, according to the, the road log that the county actually maintains, the DOT is not at that point.
It's not Trinity, it's the Shasta.
Oh, did we have this conversation? I think, so there is a road that, like on the Trinity side, it's, you know, land on the Shasta side, it's. the Shasta side, it's, or is it the other? I'm sorry, I don't know. Give me the red map right now.
Six road gone on Trinity Call. Everybody bad is county road. You know, bits of the copper that's sealed in.
So you can tell this is our order of business in a lot of ways as we're transitioning into looking at replacing culverts and, and all of that is just making sure we know that this is a VLM road, this is a county road that is going to need to do this work. And so how can we work together on making sure we do it efficiently and well?
Okay, any other, any other questions? I was, then I was going to just, I thought opportunity of the PUD had any, I think throw in on, on, on fire related.
Well, yeah, I just, um, I, I dropped, appreciate all the patience with numerous outages if you lost count. It was eight, 11 of each area. Um, and I was, I'd say there were system biologists, over 95% of our systems, all the system that's served by the Western Area Power Administration. We have, uh, substations in Big Flat, High Palm, Forestland and Route 3 that are still kind of legacy, sort of from PG&E transmission. So that was fed from the coast. Those folks never lost power. But that represents about 5% below. Uh, most of them, we revealed, Ocon City, Acor, they're all from, from Western Area Power Administration. And, and we're dependent on that service from transmission that comes over the hill from the car powerhouse and from there it runs to Cheswick. So both of those big transmission lines have impacted multiple times, obviously. Um, I mean, just too many different things to do into, uh, they're all, all different causes, you know, from, from smoke dripping out lines to fire retardant being dumped on lines, just you name it, we had, we had problems. Appreciate everybody's patience with all the allergies. For now, kind of like Tom said, the fire danger, we're back on our normal feed. Uh, both the 60 KV transmission system and the two foot are in good shape. Uh, there are some temporary structures on the car Cheswick line, uh, believe it or not, lead steel towers, which are the gold standard for durability. Uh, there were, some of them were in that area they call the, the fire tornado and, um, they were just twisted and mangled. So there are some temporary wood structures in place of those steel structures that it will take months to replace, but we're still in, uh, we're, we're in vegetation compared to where we were. So, um, appreciate everybody's patience with all the allergies and, uh, the worst should be behind us if we keep on a fire from that.
So Arnold then Chris and Jerry. Paul, I've been laboring under a misunderstanding for a long time, but I thought the, the whole point of making that line from Lewis and Dan over the hill here, here, substations as we call it, was to avoid having the wheel tower through, through the old lines. Am I, was I totally?
No, you're, you're correct. You're, you're correct. So did that. So the savings to the district and actually then therefore to all of our customers is about a million and a half dollars a year. That's the savings that we, uh, benefit from by connecting to the Western Area Power Administration versus PG&E. But those four outlined substations, it was never, and still not economically feasible to bring those onto the Western system. They're just physically too isolated. So as part of the agreement with PG&E, when those facilities were purchased from PG&E, were held harmless on the extra costs. So, uh, the power contractually still comes from the Western Area Power Administration, but it's delivered over PG&E's transmission system. So from an outage standpoint, they weren't affected by fire.
Right. Well, I was wondering not so much about those outlined substations, but just my understanding was we would get power for the bulk of, of UZ straight from Trinity Dam and wouldn't have to deal with car exigencies and, and distribution lines. And that appears to be where I misunderstood because we're not getting our power straight from.
So, so I, I actually hear that a lot from folks and it's, it's natural. If you live there, think power comes from Trinity Dam. But, but it was, the, the, the power system's never designed to work that way. It's a grid where all the power plants are tied to the lines and all the load is tied to the lines and they're all interconnected. So, uh, I, I believe that we black-started Trinity Powerhouse six different times. So that, that's just a term for when the car Trinity line was out, we had no choice as a power source, but a hydro plant at Trinity. It was never designed. And hydro plants aren't designed to run in isolation. You know, it's not like the Honda generator you buy and plug in at your house. So it had never been black-started. Matter of fact, the, the improvements made to that plant were only done a couple of years ago that even allowed the possibility and it'd never been tested. So in order to start a generator without an external source, without a grid there, you, you have to energize that electromagnetic field that that turbine spins in. So you have to have a source of power to do it. They hauled in a diesel generator to do that, to provide with the call station service and they were able to bring it up and plant. We actually failed three different times before we first time brought it up because that plant, it was capable, even with the weight level where it's at now, was capable of producing about 70 megawatts of power. Our peak load was only about 20 megawatts. So intuitively you would think, wow, we got way more generator than we need. We, it'll be easy. But given the design constraints, we had to add load, just a tiny piece at a time. And I know the folks in here that were listening on the scanner to all those times we brought that load up. And what we were doing, we sent guys into the field to literally open every distribution breaker in every substation. And sometimes we'd even split the larger loaded surface. We'd have to go out into the field and open up and kind of bring half the circuit up at once. Because we, the more load we got on the generator, the more stable it got. But the, the physical way that happened is we, we'd simultaneously have the plant operator on the phone and they would adjust the frequency and voltage. So the equivalent is 120 volts you get out of your, your socket, but obviously it generates a much higher voltage than that, but it's, it's ratio. So they actually turn up the frequency a little high to anticipate that extra load coming on, we could pull that frequency down. From a safety standpoint, if the frequency or the voltage falls outside of what's a safe rank, it trips a plant off. And that's where our first three attempts failed because even my thoughts were we ought to be able to bring a couple of megawatts on at once onto a 70 megawatt plant where we could, it would trip, which caused a frequency crash. And so we kept having to try smaller and smaller pieces. Um, you know, so we bring on like a quarter megawatt to start with. Now, once we got, you know, five, six megawatts on, we could bring on half a megawatt at a time. And that was, you know, after you tried enough, you get better at it. We kind of got the procedure down for bringing that load up. But it was, um, even Shasta, Shasta's always had black star capabilities. It's kind of the crown jewel of the Central Valley project. But the city of Shasta Lake had the same issue. They had a, they had a 24-hour outage for the entire city. They had to bring them up on an island in Shasta and they had to bring that load up slow, even though Shasta was capable of 700 megawatts or so. Well, that's all the difference, but, um.
So can you say, uh, for a layman, what, what this new line over Meston and does for us that we didn't have before?
It saves us a million and a half dollars a year. That's a quick answer. So that, that 60 KV line from Meston, where we used to tie in the, or at least in the Weaver, well, all of it. So the PG&E transmission line that's right outside our Mill Street substation is still there. That, that fed into Mill Street, fed all of, all of Lewiston. It also tied into the 60 KV system that went into Douglas City, to Lewiston and to Acor. So the Western Area Power Administration replaced that to the transmission line that comes from car to Trinity, that new substation that was built for Trinity Powerhouse by the Western Area Power Administration. We now take service from that and the Western Area Power Administration builds a 60 KV transmission line that brings all that power from that substation over to the little substation just outside of Weaverville on the Redding side. You see that substation? We have our own 60 KV that ties in there and that goes to Douglas City and to Acor and also comes over to the Mill Street, uh, substation here. So the real reason for that was financial and I'm not exaggerating, it's a million and a half dollars a year we save by being on the Western Area Power Administration system versus a specific gas and electric system.
So Jerry had a question, but first, so, so the look I see on the faces, remind me of all the guys that were at my same lab table in physics and college. We were the C tapes. They nearly got through. There's the electricity part of it.
I found a generator in my school.
So Jerry, calm down. Still have a comment or a question?
I was just also wondering, are we, are we, uh, Trinity Power, is there going to be a new state of the art tower coming in? He said, those that melted and twisted were the same.
They are. And it'll be the same, basically, be the same design. I would imagine they can still use the foundations. I haven't been in there myself and I haven't heard for sure, but I would imagine that we're placing something similar. We are getting, actually, we already have a much larger diesel generator at Trinity that's going to be hooked up. So, and hopefully not a future of him, but if there were a future of him, we'd have a much more reliable way to black start that plant. Because part of the problems we had, the generator they called in, they thought was big enough. It was 125 KW. It was not big enough. And kind of like the Honda generator at your house, you plug in the refrigerator for a little bit. Once it gets cold, then you go plug in the freezer for a little bit. If you want to watch TV, you gotta. So that's what they were doing at the power plant. They plug in the battery chargers for a little bit, let the batteries get charged and they unplug this, they go plug in the sun pumps for a little bit. And they did that until later in the process. They actually brought a bigger generator in, a 225 KW that was capable of running everything. And we were more stable once we cut that.
So will the new generator be permanent?
The new generator is permanently there. Not only they're going to have a permit from there, they're going to have a larger permanent one at car powerhouse too. In the event that we lost the car Cheswick line and the car Trinity line were in place, we could run off of two plants, which is way better than one, you know, Trinity and car.
Okay. So Clark, Kenneth?
I, I've heard people have been reading some of the comments from the Secretary of Interior, uh, uh, causes of this fire, all these fires in California. Basically blaming, uh, environmental terrorists and he's saying that it's a lack of force management. Well, we all know that what's happened here with the car fire, burned, used the red and had nothing to do with force management. Same with the ranch fire and the river fires down there. That, those burn through lands where there's no force management opportunities. It's really distressing to me that someone in that position is putting out that kind of misinformation because a lot of people in the public don't have any clue and they're just going to laugh that up.
Hey, well, Ken, I think you need to, uh, you know, West Reading's been a bomb waiting to go off in 20 years.
Yeah.
We all knew if they ever got a fire there, they got a west wind. That place was going to blow up like. Groundy is people do not want to cut trees. Thirty years now, we've been doing no management out of forests. We're destroying water, fish, wildlife, recreation, all of it. Whether you want to admit that or not, that's your problem. We built a bomb across the whole structure. If we don't start doing, you know, it's going to take us forever to get caught up. If we don't start doing something, the potential of burning this whole country up is very great. You've just got to get the wrong conditions at the right time in any means possible.
What are you, what are you going to do down there? It's great time and man's need a brush. There's no commercial.
Not saying, they could have did something to buy it down there. Okay, so Joseph, and then we'll kind of move on to what are we doing?
Well, I just want to report, I, I agree with Dee that, you know, West Reading, multiple people living out in the chaparral there were totally ignorant of what they were getting into because it probably burned every five or 10 years under natural conditions.
Burned in the seventies, Joseph. Burned in the seventies.
Yeah, okay. Then look at what we got back in 30, 40 years. I did hear one story of a friend that has a, a house in, out in the Cheswick neighborhood. He cleared his whole two acres and watered it and had a green belt and his house was the only one that didn't burn in that neighborhood. So there are things people can do, but it takes a lot of work to do it, to make your, your property fire safe, a sensible space when you're in the chaparral for.
And I think we heard from Noreen in the neighborhood, she lives in, all the houses around her burned and their houses and they're probably from the efforts that they place. Now we got to get to the projects that we are working on. So forestry issues, we're really, we're running late. So, um, the thought, the, the big topic and, and, and that we really want to talk about and that is an action item, there are two of them. One from the fuel break work group on the next project from Six Rivers and the other is joint chiefs 2019 proposal. So what I thought was kind of top project update, you know, from each of the major players, VLM, Shasta T, Six Rivers, on projects that we've been talking about. So, uh, and I don't know. I mean, so like VLM, for us, that has been Grass Valley Creek. So kind of what's, what's, what's the big, big, big takeaway other than you're waiting to go out and see what burned?
So I think that's kind of the takeaway from that, that would be different than what you heard last time from VLM and HE. Um, the other thing we have going on forestry wise is that, um, did repackage, Holina reduced the price, put it out for bid.
And that's a salvage.
That's a salvage, yep. And so bids on that close today, let's see. Um, we've produced bids, that's why we've reduced the price. Looked at that sale again. Um, the other thing is, I know we talked a lot throughout our resource management plan. Given the car fire and the changed condition and workload, we are going to be putting a pause on that, that you might expect to focus on rehab and recovery.
And, and speaking of resource, you know, staff resources, I would imagine next projects in GDC and that sort of thing will end up having to wait until you deal with post-fire specialist needs, right?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, I think there's going to be at least some network in Grass Valley related to that.
Yeah, yeah. So Sally.
Sure.
For the Shasta T.
Yeah.
And, and, and at this point also, I'm, because I know fuel break work group has probably been working with Tom, you can maybe give us, you know, if Sally doesn't have all the information on like final project, give us a quick update there too.
Okay, um, just for our forests, um, many of our employees were affected by the fires. Some of our employees did have their houses burned down or their houses damaged by the fires. So while that was all happening, pretty much everything was on hold, or at least for those employees. Uh, we've got some employees working as raids as well on our fires here on the district and then supporting national anti-terrorist teams around the west. And fire borrowing has started. That was the one sentence update I got on that. So.
Even, yeah, so.
Uh, more to come on fire borrowing. Dubicella, they're still trying for a decision in October. They need to sit a meeting with interested parties to develop a monitoring plan. And they'll be putting that in the paper and notifying those who responded during the civil period.
And Dubicella, for those that don't get kind of a, a first shot using the CE for bug kill kind of dead tree kind of, kind of areas, right? How big is it?
I think it's close to the max.
Twenty-five? Which is 3,000 is the max, right? So it's, I think it's just under that.
Uh, pilot project, uh, they're working on modeling and the process from the GIS data. Um, they're still trying for a final decision in March or April, although there's no concrete date on where the draft will be.
So from, uh, fuel break work group, any, any thing to add on, on the pilot project?
Well, basically we've been set back another year. You know, implementation is scheduled for July of 19 now. So this project just keeps getting, uh, back burner to everything else. And, you know, we're, I'm not sure we're ever going to see this project come to fruition. It just seems like, you know, they don't want it to happen. But we're now set back another year.
Kenneth?
Well, it's not on the back burner, Joseph. I've done all the field work on the pilot project. It's now, uh, Kent is entering all the data into GIS and, uh, I'm going to be writing the civil culture report, uh, in September. So it's being worked on.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, but it's been worked on for six years now.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, it's not on the back burner.
So Nick, isn't what Ken's hired to do, didn't your crews already do that a couple of years ago?
No, they did, they did an inventory. They did, they put in about 500 inventory plots. And part of, part of my job was to make sure that those were in, you know, to identify what veg type those were in so that it could be run through FBS, the analysis down. And so I've done that and, and Randy, uh, is, Randy. And so I've done that, and Randy is, Randy Harris Analysis.
Yeah, Randy Harris.
Randy Harris.
Okay, so, you have more?
So those were all the south forecasting, TR move updates, Bird Ranch, they're still working on the draft EIS. Hope is that we'll be ready for comment in October. They will have a public field trip during the 45 day commentary for anyone who wishes to visit the project.
Okay. That is. Larry, or, go ahead, Terry. So are we still putting Fuel Break in on the side of the road?
I don't know specifics of the project. I can ask the question, and they can get back to you. So you'd like to know the distance of Fuel Break?
Yeah, roads and Bird Ranch and all that stuff. Are you talking about the side of the project?
No, I'm talking about Bird Ranch.
Larry?
I just want to mention High Palm Project, we had a meeting with Tom and Dan Hoffman, we were going to have the second one, the fires interrupted that, and they brought to us preliminary maps identifying 14,500 acres that we are going to start focusing on. Due to half of that is to broadcast burn, trying to take advantage of what happened in 2015 fires, be able to utilize the fuels that got burned away. Again, we haven't really looked at it in detail, if it's usable or not for any of the projects, but all the other projects, the vast majority of the projects are done with the final result being where we can require and maintain a good ones.
Okay. The Trinity Alps Willingness Crest Fire Project, we're updating the specialist reports and the EA to include the 2015 river complex, and we're hoping to release the draft EA comment in November with a 38-month period.
Okay. So recognizing that Sally is in the recreation side of things and not the forestry side, any questions that she can take back, you know, to the appropriate staff who can answer anything else? Dan, so.
I have one more.
Oh, you've got one more?
Okay, well, I have two, but we can do that one.
Yeah, well, this one we'll do later.
Teddy John, all consultations with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service have been completed, supplemental information report and administrative records being put together. Once those are finalized and hearing, schedule will be prepared between the lawyers from both sides on the boards. At that point, the case will proceed, essentially, once the supplemental information report is signed, there will be no legal barriers stopping implementation of the project. However, while we were in litigation, any decisions to implement activities in the project area may be discussed without lawyers or personnel.
Okay.
Sunshine, Ray.
Yeah. Smokey Dave. Will you read your hand? And, so.
First 48 is signed, we're in contract prep right now, we'll, I have a review of the contract at 1:30 today, by a phone, just to make sure we've got everything in it. The whole project is just shy of 1,000 acres, there's 478 acres of commercial harvest on that for 5.1% timber. And as we were talking yesterday, that took 1,000 truckloads. And it went, the project went well, we learned some lessons, and we did an EA of that, we talked to the regional office and had our project reviewed, and we've had acre woods reviewed, and now we're going forward with a CE in the future, because it needs to convert to exclusion, there's a little risk to that, and things like lawsuits or something, but we're going to go ahead and move forward. So the projects that we're currently working on are finalized, the first 48, there's a small project called D70, which is a rethinning of part of the old fuel break that Joseph worked on in years past.
The man, really?
Yeah. It's just a very, very small amount of thinning, I think like 68 acres. And then we're head on into Acre Woods, and we're working a little bit of cow fire on the big neighborhood of Thornton with Acre Woods. And it's going to be somewhere around 1,500 acres.
We'll talk about Acre Woods when we get to talking about Acre Woods.
Oh, yeah.
Any, any questions for Dan on, primarily, I guess, first 48 would be the main, main one, anybody got anything there?
That's the first green project we've worked on.
So, I have, so it, it uses the same prescription as the pilot project on Chastity?
Yeah.
Okay, and, go ahead, Art.
Well, maybe, maybe you were going there, I, I thought we should note, Dan, you've got some of the Fuel Break Work Group out there to look at the mark.
Yep.
Being done by a private outfit out of Eureka, I think.
Yes.
And that had always been a big worry, or uncertainty for everyone, is, is could timber markers understand what we're talking about and, and do it? Overall, it seemed like they, they didn't have the idea. We saw a few little things that we would do different, some, some of those, Dan went on the next day and did it different.
And Larry saw that, he saw it, he saw it on the ground. Okay. So when you say would have done different, do you mean that you would, you know?
Well, would have done different, or you would have done it itself?
Yeah, you got in and looked at the mark, and I saw it, too, you got in there, and we've talked about this for so long, that, you know, you kind of, you kind of know what you're looking for, and when we got into a couple of the stands, we looked around, and we're like, okay, another tree needs marking, and that was a mark to leave, there was just a little, a little pocket, and there was an obvious tree that he'd left. And so, we, and we also went back to one of the units on top, and redid half the unit for 37 acres, and we picked up about 50 more trees than you'd left him to meet the criteria that we had. It had the same problem that you guys picked up on.
So, you know, most importantly, I think, we felt the, the markers did have an understanding of what we were after, and they were mostly.
They were able to implement that.
And I think, not only did Dan go fix a couple of things, but I think he, he talked to the markers, so that, you know, that's the bigger, the bigger issue is, they wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, one of the things, one of the things that needs to acknowledge, too, is that Nick's crew that's working for us on that also inspected that project, and so they have that marked down now, too. And so moving forward on projects, I've got a slew of people now who know what that mark should look like.
Cool, okay, but I thought one of the big takeaways is that it is possible to describe something that's been on paper to something that goes to the field, and it can translate, well, I mean, yeah, a few little things here and there, but, Dan, just ask. Okay, any other questions for Dan? If not, okay, Fuel Break, oh, Joseph.
Well, I think you're going there, I was going to ask Dan to explain to us about the change in prescription that's proposed for Acre Woods.
So we're at Acre Woods, so this is, and this is a proposed, a possible action item, so, Dan, describe that Fuel Break, jump in where you think is appropriate, and.
So this project was supposed to be our third green project, how in the future, we're supposed to do water boost first. We had some landowner issues on that project, so we switched to this one. The landscape is a little different in this area.
So where is this area?
It's from the backside of the Z guard station, so, not, not to the end of Trinity County, we've got another hour and a half drive, but it stays out there ways by Z. And I have a large station out there, a staffing group, so it goes from behind there and a plant to a large, large plantation, and then there's north, and it goes into the fires from 2015. So basically, I'm connecting the landscapes in there. What we've got is a really large, flat top now, and it's completely flat across the, across today, and it has a sharp breaking slope on one end. We've had fires in the past, up in 2015 and back in 2008 and 9, the fires come out of that, and they hit that breaking slope, and they shoot embers out and across the flat. And so, when we got there, because of the width of that, we wanted to be able to catch that, the fire embers, and I think everybody that was there got to sit on that bushy slope and feel the warm, hot wind blowing in your face, it's like, it's like a hair dryer blowing in your face. And so the, the idea here is to take the road to the breaking slope, take that portion and treat it, but I still need some distance on the other side of the road to be able to effectively catch the type of fire that comes out of that west side of the ground. And cow fire was not effective in stopping at that here when it came out. So, one of the conditions I've got is it's also cow fires do get it. And so I really want to prevent the heavy amount of dozer operation that I had in the past on that side. So I've still got a lot of problems. And so expanding this to meet the terrain, because this is so much harder than the first 48, or most places.
So how many, how many, basic stuffs, how, how big is it, how many acres?
So right now, with, with the discussion that we have in the, in the field, it's about 1,650 acres, but specialists are out working on it now. It is primarily in a single age white fir.
And what, I mean, my understanding is the prescription would be tweaked?
It goes to, in places to 600 feet.
Oh, yes, up to 600 feet?
Not on those.
Total.
Total.
So in the past, we've always brought the Fuel Break Work Group prescriptions, fire kilometer, fire break, and initial roadside fuel break prescription, to the full collaborative for ratification. So I thought we needed to bring this one to a vote, so that if there's any objection to going to 600 feet, that it's only for this one project, it's not changing our prescription for overall, it's only for this one project, but it fits the landscape to go about 600 feet, and it's all tractor operable, so it's an ideal situation, but I didn't want the full collaborative to be in agreement.
Couple other things that I forgot, so, so going 600 feet is not the whole project, it's very specific to the board, it's a part of the project. The project has a little pinch in it, and that pinch forward is wiper that we're actually doing that in. The other thing is, the actual mark and prescription on the ground will be the same, that prescription.
So the diameter plus kind of.
Yeah, it's all we're looking at, is the width of, how far do we go from the road to the breaking slope, and if we go 400 feet there, then can we go, you know, 200 on this side, have that wider buffer? But the prescription, and I wish, there's no way to take a picture and make it, like, visible for someone to see, but the prescription, it looks good on the ground, I think it's going to be great.
Larry?
So what I want to say, that I don't think is we can be accurate enough, this is a really strategic ridge, a bunch of communities in southern Humboldt to the west, and then you come up this ridge, and then you have this long, flat ridge, and the fire history, what is this, six rotations of fire?
Yeah.
And it's all wiper, so when you're standing there and you look at this, you realize that our usual prescription probably wouldn't even work there because of the way the fire would spread through the wiper, it'd be need to be wide work where this large, flat ridge is making it work.
One of the, one of the things, so one of the things, if I did the regular prescription, it'll go out a little ways, and then I've got untreated timber and then the breaking slope, and so our, our fuel break won't work if fire comes from the west, through the vegetation, hits the untreated timber, and starts burning that, it will go through our fuel break, there's no way we're going to be able to stop it. And even at 600 feet, I'm fairly confident, I think everybody on the field trip thought that was pretty good, we had some fire managers, we had provincial ecologists look at it, and so that, that looks better, but yeah, five to six stand replacing fires in this.
Sure.
So just to clarify, you just extended on two of them, but you're, the same prescription of lead trees stays.
Everything's the same except for that, that, that 300 foot rougher, that's the only change, and it's only for the northern half of the project.
Okay. Any, other, Larry?
So this project would like to retain glowing embers to keep it from the crown?
Oh, yes.
So it'll be treated so that it'll hit the ground and stay low in plain way?
That's exactly what it is.
And so, and, and is there, are you putting maintenance in that plan also, that it'll be going back every so often?
So just like 48, we have a very, a variety of ways of treating the field, depending on the landscape or the slope. We oftentimes have been using mastication in these areas, and it's been really successful, especially in the wiper, the rocks so fast, and they're very successful. But the plan on this one is, you decrease the number of balls on the, on the ground, so you don't have transfer from trunk to trunk, and also the crowns are separated, so you're not transferring from crown to crown, and you can even have trees that flash off and burn without blowing the crown to crown across the fuel break. But the ground is also prepped so that we can burn it in the future.
And I think part of Larry's question is the need for cover, future maintenance.
Sure will.
And what kind of crown cutter are you expecting? Is it going to be different than what you've been doing?
No, it'll be, well, it's, it's definitely different than what we've been doing on non-collaborative projects, but the collaborative prescription that has been out there for the pilot project is fully implemented on the other first 48, and it will be on this one, too. And so the crowns basically don't touch, but they're close, and it maintains a nice canopy so you don't have white thorn and man's need to grow up underneath, but at the same time, you're not going to transfer fire in a high severity ground. So what we're trying to do is reduce the number of acres that burn at a certain time, and also get the severity and the fire on the ground.
Okay, other questions for, for Dan?
I'm just kind of curious on, if we make a motion to take action, not sure how you, how you're going to word that, look that into what you're just describing on meeting the needs for action.
What I would do is, if the group here makes a motion and agrees to expand that, the only portion that we need to do. To expand, to expand, how wide do you go off the road?
So the only difference is the width in one area, in, in specific.
Yeah, it, it goes for a couple miles, and then it just, the terrain changes again in the 2015 fires, and we're tied into that, and we're tied into the botanical building this, the glasses. I thought about pushing it up.
Tom was actually out in the field with us, and we're talking about Acre Woods, Tom, and why we need to go wider, if you want to jump in on it.
Yeah, I think the main thing is, it's all fire behavior, with the standard on a shaded fuel break, and what happens when the fire comes roaring up the hill? If you only have on one side of the road, if we went 250 feet or 300, 300 feet are maximum, on the one side of the road, takes us to the rim, then you still have embers flying across and blocking the other side of the road into this big, flat area, where we have up to another 300 foot treatment on there, you have a lot, a higher chance of, one, catching embers, but two, also giving a lot wider, safer spot to burn out along that road to stop the fire. So, we just felt, and Joseph actually made a suggestion, which I think was really good, is, okay, we know we have 250 to 300 feet up against the rim, why don't we just take to 600 feet and try and do what is the right, right thing to do? And so we all agreed that it would be a prudent way to demonstrate some good fire management there.
So our request would be for this project, that we modify, be able to modify the prescription up to 600 feet, as Noreen allowed.
So, I'll take that, okay.
We have a motion from Carol Paul, does the vote taker get it? Pretty much, so.
Second.
A second from Bob Morris, now questions, comments, suggestions, Nick?
Yeah, just discussion, you know, this logic would apply anywhere, right? I mean, you're talking about using the landscape to, and thinking about slope, you know, position and fire behavior, and so, would we assume that we would sort of play this out in the future on, on any project? I mean, it's a logical.
We're being careful to request it at this time, only for this project, certainly not closing the door to some future project that needs to be modified, but just.
Right, so whatever you're starting, I mean, my, my thought would be, you're starting consideration in future projects, we have up to 600 feet to work with, we have this baseline that we want to be at 300 feet.
No, no. That's not, that's not the mentality you want to work with.
So right now, it's site-specific, and if we.
That's what I'm saying, site-specific, like, look at the landscape and think about.
But if I, but if I have an area like that, I'm going to come to the, to the group and talk to you.
So I think, yeah, so I think the operative thing is that it's case by case, and in future cases, the Forest Service and the Department will come back.
And in future cases, the Forest Service and the Department will come back to this to get, to prescribe it and get their blessing, get the vote.
It's site specific, but only to this project.
Right, it's this site.
Yeah. And I do have another area on a project in the future that we'll have to look at. There's so many concerns in it. I'm not sure that it's prudent to even discuss.
We won't. We have a motion in the second on something specific. So any further discussion? Karen?
So.
So at six hundred feet, we don't, we can go further. I don't want that to be a, you know, we can expand it further based on the landscape.
Well, on this project, if they were to change here open, if we have it, or if it were to be something different, then come back.
So I just wanted to open that door because I learned from class, we're going to, we would have to go. If you wanted to go from one end of the class to the other end, it's twenty-seven hundred feet. And it is pancake flat. So it's at five thousand feet, but no, we don't want to do that. We're talking just on six hundred.
Okay.
Because that'll be affecting.
So we have a motion in the second for Acre Woods to amend or adapt the three hundred foot maximum width to six hundred feet where the conditions warrant it, right? On this project.
Yes.
Okay. So all the collaborative members who are in favor of that, raise your hands. Okay, we could count them, what we could just say. Is there anybody opposed to, to raise a hand? Okay, good job. Oh, are you opposing?
No.
I'm like, Arnold, come on, you were there.
I want to, it seems like for the collaborative, we should, we should add a little, one more thing of context, which is that the crews for the first forty-eight project came in with more timber than we thought. And the mark on the first forty-eight and our surveillance or our visit to the Acre Woods project seemed quite promising. And the timber guys that were along said, someone can make money doing your job on this land. And so not only are we, we're not just experimenting with fire here, but we're actually, we seem to be achieving the purpose of economic benefit at the same time. And I think that's, you know, the collaborative should understand, members should understand and be pleased. It's working like we hoped it would work, but we didn't.
Oh, we'll have to wait and see if they sell.
Yeah. It's been six years hoping and waiting.
And so it's important, you know, the purpose of you, the project, to create that fuel break. At the same time, we want to grab jobs, and at the same time as that, we want to get funds back to work and do the rest of the project. And a lot of work in, money is going to go into maintaining the roads in this project. So that we've got that infrastructure up there. About the crews, so what happened was we did some early plots, kind of image, the mark, and took that back and ran the numbers for the stands. It came out at just about three point six million, three point five. But when we actually did them really on the ground, did the mark, and then after you guys took a look at it, it came out at five point one.
Okay. Good job, everybody. So the next agenda item is also a potential action item. And I'm going to ask Nick to help out here. So we're going to talk about the joint chiefs. So we all know that we're in, I think, the third and final year of the joint chiefs project that we got funded through Forest Service and NRCS a while back. And about two, maybe three weeks ago at most, email went out to federal folks, you know, Forest Servicers and beyond, I think, also saying, there's going to be another round for our fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Now, what happens, the fire borrowing might change, you know, how much money there is available. Let's have an email, kind of strange, suggested that it was going to be a fairly robust offering.
Yes.
You know, through the same sort of process. So, and, and the proposals are due before we meet in October. So this is our shot as a collaborative, your shot as a collaborative, to weigh in and potentially suggest to the board of supervisors to weigh in on supporting a project. And to, I was just getting involved in this group when you guys were taking this, the last one up. And you recall that essentially you as a group kind of took action on a fairly broad, global. We think this is a good idea, you guys, the Forest Service, NRCS, Watershed Center, RCD, figure out the details. But you, you wanted to support the Forest Service and NRCS moving forward to compete for funding. So want to try to do the same thing now and have Nick kind of talk about kind of the, the big, big picture. And then get to the extent that we can, talk about kind of the, the key pieces of it, yes.
So is it possible for the October, we need to have a report on?
Yeah, we definitely have, we, we do the same thing, report on what is the, and we can be getting out, you know, detailed stuff as it's being kind of typed up and written, and that's it.
So would it be possible in October, we have a report about how the joint chiefs, you know, have been expanded so far?
Yes. Yes. So this is a proposal for a three year?
No, we're a new three year.
A new three.
A new three year.
Brand new money.
These guys are spending down what they've got. Nick?
Yeah, so, you know, this was, folks were involved, recall, you know, basically this is our first opportunity to go after sort of special money, you know, as part of collaborative priorities and their number of programs that the events have that are designed to, for basically groups working together in collaboration across large landscapes to think about how they're going to affect fire. So this is something that the Forest Service and NRCS have had for, boy, six, five years now. And they've continued the program. So the agencies, the chiefs at those agencies like these programs. The money that ultimately ends up hitting the ground for the units, so for Dan's purposes, Tom's, for Jen's purposes, ends up being pretty flexible. And so the proposal we put together for this was four pages that earned us, us collectively, you know, three million dollars over three years that we wouldn't have had for the, for the units here. Dan can kind of attest to what it did for his program. I mean, I think it's worth like unpacking what actually happened. Like Lawrence asked, like what have you gotten the money on? But Dan, maybe you just give like a big picture of what it did for you. Rather than specifics.
So to start out, so this collaborative has been unit number two or number three on the priority list on six river. Since, sorry. We're now number one on the priority list. And we hold the top two spots actually for projects and for money. We would not be in that position, nor would we have first forty-eight done right now if it wasn't for joint chiefs because it provided also money for layout marketing crews and things like that that were shown in the proposal. I think it was phase two. However, on the ground, we have been able to masticate areas in the work group. Got to see some of those on the field trip where we were masticating ridge tops, fixing the roads through there that had formerly been completely brushed over. No chance of fighting fire at all. In fact, I wouldn't even allow it. But now there are places I can hold a fire. I can backburn, I can do a lot of things. And so this provided a lot, it provided a lot to the community as far as jobs and firewood. So five hundred cords of firewood in front of joint chiefs.
So would you, would you have a, a, a round number on how much of joint chiefs did you spend?
So I had, out of the three million, I had like one point, one point three million, I think, of that. I would have been really, knowing what it did and how it did, I would probably add fifty percent for.
Yeah, and, and rough number of acres treated or to be treated.
I just sent that email out trying to do the numbers.
Okay, well then, then.
We have a report.
Okay. I was just trying to help, especially with carters, you know. And that's important. Did we, did we, you know, as a group, did we spend in an appropriate and useful way that three million bucks?
It's going to be rough doing an A B comparison between the forests because the way they keep their books and the way you have.
Well, I know it'll be, I know it's apples and oranges in vendors, NRCS, and they, they keep their information different.
I can give you this, we, we constructed twenty-nine miles of fuel breaks along the roadside out of the Peverside and Kelsey project, mostly Kelsey. And actually, Kelsey is in Udo Loholt. So there's twenty-nine miles of road that is treated up. So and then it just depends on the terrain, if we built the full hundred and fifty that we were going to on those projects or if we were narrow or because of slope.
And Jen, I don't know if you have any, so it was Forest Service, you know, National Forest System ground and private land. And it was focused on the South Fork, Trinity and the Mad River, water, upper Mad River watersheds. Hardly to sort of find a way to tell a story that was cohesive to sell this project, right? Just saying Trinity County and we want to go do good things and we like roadside fuel breaks, probably not compelling enough. A story as you elevate it to the national level to sell, right? And so we described a project that was watershed focused, that had community wildfire protection and landscape resilience focus. And that's banned public and private land. And that was sort of the story we wove to, to help sell the, the funding. The private land side, it basically brought in additional equip funding, so cost share money for private land owners.
Yeah, we have about one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that's currently secured under the current proposal. I did bring this up to, you know, a high level. And unfortunately, NRCS was not even aware there was a new request. They had no, you know, knowledge of the new proposal. So there's going to be, so it's up at the state office level now, and they're actually going to be, they're meeting on the twenty-first. So unfortunately, I have too much information right now to go over the numbers and see, because from there, and they don't know if there's going to be a lot of funds available for joint chiefs, and they want a whole lot of work to be done if the chances of, you know, getting approved are a little slim. So only more after the twenty-first, that meeting. But yeah, for the current, you know, they are in, they're, they're in support of it. You know, granted that that may make sense for us. And we, but we currently have one hundred and sixty thousand secured right now for the project.
One of the nice things on my district is that Travis Ranch and all these properties have treatment done. They're connected into the Forest Service treatments. And we're actually, I think they're better treatments than the ones that we planned in our previous projects. It was really good to work on the ground. So that was nice to have those properties get in and do the maintenance that they needed to do and connect those fuel breaks that they've worked on in the past. Some of the property connects to the beverage fuel break. So that was really well done.
So something else I'll just mention quickly from the standpoint of like how we were able to capture the money that was maybe unique last time, doesn't need to be like this time, you know, we, so we had this direct relationship with the Secretary of Agriculture, right? Came out and cared about what Trinity County Collaborative Group was doing. Not sure that the current Secretary of Agriculture knows where Trinity County was, where Trinity County Collaborative Group is. So, you know, we're probably not especially well positioned in that sense. The other thing we did last time around that were useful, I think we got the regional, so we had to sell it through the regional office with the Forest Service and have them make it a priority. And so put together that briefing paper, talked to us, Trinity County Collaborative Group, got the regional budget director for the Forest. We did like a webinar for us, you guys might remember, she finally called in and had the eight fourth paragraph. And she gave a presentation about the project, or more about us, what we were doing. And then that probably helped elevate the project as well. So we did some things on the side that I think were useful. At the Forest Service Regional Office and NRCS or state level, to provide more awareness now of what we are and what we're doing. So I don't know if we need to do that same kind of work, but we don't have some kind of straight line to achieve.
And we were having every other month phone calls with Robert's line, you know, like. So he never failed to ask, how are you going on the proposal?
So that said, you know.
So Nick, on the first three years, we, we saw that there was money dividing between the two forests and what projects the money would be spent on, kind of, you know, gross scale, not very specific. Is that going to be the case for the next three years' worth of money? Do we have that same system where we have to allocate each year so much money and for what projects? Because if we, if we're going into that again, I really think the collaborative needs to have more say about where the money is going to be sent to and what projects are going to be funded. So.
Yeah. So yes, you know, it'd be a similar proposal process where we'd identify what's the sort of scope. So what landscape do we want to work on? How much each forest, what part of the landscape we're trying to link up with private lands, between public lands. And then, you know, what projects are our priorities? I think what was different than what I certainly I anticipated was, you know, all that money that just ran through existing internal channels and forests had a lot, the units had a lot of discretion, right, about how you ultimately decide to use the money. So as things changed or priorities shifted, or there was a gap somewhere, you know, Dan was able to make decisions, or Tom was able to make decisions about how to plug that money in. And so what we proposed in the beginning was related to what the outcomes were, but wasn't sort of, in my experience with grant proposals, was not at all like what it usually is, which is really tight, like annual budget, very specific, allocating specific projects and resources and used in that manner.
So what the difference though was that Dan would come to us and say, oh, I'm thinking about using the money for this project. And we go, yeah, or I don't think we ever said no. I think I always said, yeah. But Tom never asked us at all. He would tell us later, oh, yeah, we did this, we did that. So I think that's what Joseph did.
So accountability, you know, I struggled with that. We've asked a number of times.
I think I'm actually talking about the governance instead of the government.
Talking about governance and how a collaborative has in helping to decide where they spend.
And so we're, so what I'll do is I'll get a spreadsheet that has all of our annual expenditures. It's down in the pen. I'll bring that, as well as the other figures we reported. One of the things that might be different, I have a bunch of office, but has automatically applicable approval sitting on her, her desk. And so even though I'll talk to the work group about anything, before I even do that, I check the third and see if it passes the same test with her, and everything happens to be, but we're seeing those parts out of the compliance. And because there's a good faith part there, I think we realize either, Nick said that all of a sudden they're just going to give you a mandate. And you're going to start drawing up.
And it's a little different with NRCS because of course they have landowner privacy, you know, kind of rules that they have to follow as far as the expenditure of equip money on private land. So we got to recognize, we kind of, I think with NRCS, we say, you know, here, here globally are the private lands that we think are most important. And then linked to the projects on federal land, but we can't say yes to this one, no to that one.
Well, we also have a screening process.
Yeah, they've got a lot.
That we could create. So we do have to, you know, kind of milk it down. Maybe we want to thin that if we want prioritized.
What we think are. So where do we go? How do we do this now? Go ahead, Larry.
And so, what are we at bridge? Was that despite you go only towards integrated projects?
Yeah, that was not, and that was not turned out not to be the case.
So that's not the case. So that. So I have, I have used it for prep of projects. So like I, Forest Service typically does it, but then they prep the, the project on the ground. That's one of the things that takes a while. On first forty-eight, I did all of this. I took a risk that with you as partners, I was going to have a successful project. I wasn't going to have an investment on the ground that I lost because the project I assumed it didn't work. And so I used monies to do the prep on the ground with the next crew. So the boundary flag and all that. Because I have, I have no forestry staff, I have one person. So not the normal, not the normal cluster. So we're allowed to do that. I couldn't however, use it for say, my salary working on the demon document.
Available project, you use that one for that?
I have not used it for any, any of the equity side of things. I've used it for prep of a project or implement. of a project or implementation, and prep was separated up by the regional office and that was, that passed the SNF test, but actually using it for like my staff's salary was not. They didn't like that, so what I did is, on the, on the first 48 project, got Nick's group involved, because they hired foresters, that I should have, but do our hiring processes don't, that have no way to plan the project out without them.
Yes, I, you know, outstanding questions and governance sort of aside, you know, does the collaborative believe that this was generally a positive for our collective work and would we want to go after it again? I mean, just like sense?
Yes.
Okay, so, if we wanted to go after it again, we need to decide what story we're telling about what landscape and roughly where we want to go and, and again, the proposal priorities are gonna, I think have, ultimately the funding's gonna have about the same amount of flexibility as existed last time, so we're gonna propose some things, they're gonna be more general than ultimately what it takes to get the money to hit the ground, and that there's gonna be opportunity, I think, for prioritization on a year-to-year basis if we're successful with the money. If we want a different kind of governance process for the use of the money, I think we could, we shouldn't set that, we should say, "Yes, we do," and we've gotta set that aside. And just think now, a lot of conversation about what the priorities ought to be. Pat and Kelly and I talked a little bit about, okay, we focus just on the South Fork and the Mad River because that's where a lot of the Eva Shell stock was and we're, we have a lot of others focused, but we didn't spend anything on the Trinity River management yet. We wanna think about things outside of that landscape in the future, we want to think about different kinds of projects, just.
It could be, you know, do we?
Power access, you talked about community protection, we're just blaming.
Well, I would say, one of the parts of this conversation that best first thing that came to my mind is, if you're trying to sell a story, given the, the spider that, you know, worked in the community, it seemed like our story could be, we need, we really have a duty to protect our communities, so around, we were building the whole, you know, the community forests, you know, all the work that needs to be done or maintained later and all that. And, you know, there's a thing that just came out of the insurance industry that most major communities in the city, you know, as far as the wonderful towns and local areas, we didn't do second or third, we didn't have that, so we were like, I think we were a big solid, we have communities that are protected by the forest, so we want to be, you know, neighbors with the fence and so, you know, let's protect ourselves.
Yeah.
Also, to answer that question, and I concur with Carol, you can go back, you're asking to keep going the same lines, and I'm thinking, back when we formed this, we also had a mission. And I don't see that it's changed, that Carol and the rest of the standout around the, you know, the needs, probably say, like his cancer, his form, well, we had the help from Sway C and so on, so to answer that, I would say just fall back on what the original was, it's been working for us successfully, that we're getting national recognition on. Does that not answer your question?
Part of it, part of it. Yeah, I mean, the broader question would be like to be, you know, South Fork and Mad River, we sort of focused it on this watershed, you know, source watershed history, we kind of told a story that was more about landscapes and a little bit about communities, we can tell a story that was more, and, and this is kind of the conversation we had, Dan, Tom and other Forest Service kind of folks, is we can't just say we want to keep doing more of what we did before, and that's not really gonna be.
That's not.
Exactly, that's very important.
That's the other.
And so.
That's the other.
Yeah, so if we wanted to focus on communities, you know, if we wanted to change or expand the landscape, if we wanted to work around the Weaver Basin, we're gonna have to grow community forests and Forest Service has the priorities that have been funded, partly because we've focused on the landscapes we have.
Carol.
Well, and just try to change the core interior at NRCS, so if you're.
No, so it's all, it's both Department of Interior.
Right.
It's Ag and that.
Two chiefs and a.
Well, but so if one in NRCS, you gotta have some kind of end for it, if you're dealing with community wildfire protection, there's a big role we need to have private land participation, especially if we could work with the Forest Service on some sort of ability to go from private land into Forest Service services. We talked about, we talked about before, people that that way up in Forest Service land, they can build 25 acres and take out a lot.
So, so when, you know, Nick and Kelly and I got together and chatted about it, we asked Dan, Tom, Jenna and Joe to kind of give us their thoughts on if we're gonna move forward with a paid proposal, you know, supported by the collaborative, what might that look at? And so, I mean, Tom, obviously not here, I don't know that he gave you any, anything from the South Fork side.
No, I just have the tier.
And Dan, I think, has been saying, so he would, he would, he would do more of this, of, of, of what we've been doing, and you can talk about specifics of that. Jenna was kind of, well, wherever it turns out to be, you know, we can work with the private land owners and, and make sure that we're working on private land that complements or supports, you know, the work that happens on federal land. So the fires, I'm gonna put, take, put on my fire safety council hat for the moment, the fire safety council has been leaning on the Forest Service, on Joe's files in particular, ever since he showed up and sent him a letter saying, one of the really high priorities needs to be to protect and take advantage of the investment that's already been made in federal dollars in the Weaverville Community Forest. And so, so Joe said, well, how, what's been that investment? So I took the time to go back through because I'm kind of the keeper of the records for the Title II RAC for so long, I went through 2002 through 2010 Title II RAC funds spent in, on Forest Service land in the Weaverville Community Forest on fuels projects, and that turned out to be 1.19 million dollars of investment in doing fuels modifications on the public, on the federal land, of Forest Service land. If you add, a match that went along with that, a match could have been other appropriated dollars, it could have been grants that the RCD had, it could have been just sweat equity for people. The total turns out to be an investment of roughly 1.95 million dollars on fuels reduction, fuels modification projects. And on top of that, the watershed center has been successful in getting federal dollars through the Stevens Act to do companion projects on private land adjacent to that federal land in the Weaverville Basin. So we were thinking that at least as a part of a proposal, there may be a compelling argument that can be made that that ought, that, that's a big thing that we can, you know, and the Forest Service, Laura Graham and her staff have been working on kind of a, a proposal, what would that look like on the ground, doing essentially maintenance, primarily maintenance-related work, you know, in the community forest where previous work has been done, either mastication, prescribed fire, or handwork, you know, cut pile burn kind of, kind of thing. So that was one, that's one thought, and I think Sally has a, probably gotten another of them.
So what, Laura, was supposed to come, a question related by fight and smoke, so she put together a briefing paper on what she would like to see happen in the Woodville Community Forest. She made this map, and if you, on your break, you're gonna come up here and take a look, all the different colored units for all the work that's been completed in the community forest since 1996. So if you could take one of these and pass it around. So since the first organ fire in 2001, the Forest Service and its own partners have obviously been working in the community basin. And she'd like to propose a project under this Joint Chief, as would Joe, to go out and retrieve these units. Many of them are now 20 years old, maybe can re-burn, maybe, maybe a little bit of mastication or some hand treatments before we were able to go in there and re-burn them. So she would like for this group to consider this to be maybe the anchor of the project is wildfire community protection that has been tested and completed by the community forest. Cuberlink wants to emphasize, read and introduce fire in this definitely logical role. The project would have pretty main objectives, and that would be to implement prescribed fire, this is on the back page, within the possibility of injuries and wildfire footprints, implement hand and mechanical treatments in order to prepare for that future prescribed fire, and to maintain these areas with prescribed fire, the furniture pool that is exclusive to the resettlement fire, which you can. In the past, this has been completed by lots of our partners through Title II RAC, California Deer Association, various RCD grants. So in summary, this work and other community work on the private lands, appreciate good collaboration in this project. Take a look at what Laura.
Yeah, I recognize that Sally's the messenger, so she may not have answers to questions, but, you know, questions for the Forest Service.
So, just a suggestion, fire is kind of a source of, in my opinion.
Is there any question?
So, well, even the, that shooting could, like on number three, domestication, the.
So, one of those fire things, sir. That's right, they would do all their.
Correct.
So many of the units don't need any paperwork because they're recently treated, but the older units that now have brush or ladder fuels could all be treated before the prescribed fire.
In small fires.
I'm not sure if it would be piled or domesticated.
Small.
Small.
No fire.
I figured this room.
Yeah, I need Laura, Laura and Billy to broadcast, broadcast for the ass.
Oh, just, just a thought.
Just a second.
Thank you.
Mary.
Do we need a force to add this to our.
On which agenda?
On my next agenda or next.
No, this proposal, as I said at the beginning, the Joint Chiefs proposal is due to be submitted before we meet again in October. This is a proposed action item, and this group wants to support the concept of submitting a proposal, any specifics that you want to add to that, so that everybody can start working on it.
So one big thing on this is if we can maintain these, it costs $200 to be retrieved. If we let them go, it's gonna cost $1,800 or more to get them back to that state where it is protecting our community and protecting our, our resources around.
Larry, then Larry, then Joseph.
Well, speaking against my own self-interest is, I don't know where, I think this is where you need to be spending dollars around the world, you know, up in the.
Larry.
I agree, and I think your word also should be the proposal, but is this an example of how specific we can get with the proposal? We don't need to have these kinds of details in what you're asking for right now, but that's an example of what the policy.
Yeah, but I don't think this is on our program of work yet, so I mean, this is a proposed project.
And that's, that's the, the community forest.
And then, yeah, and the fire safety council, yeah. And I would say, so it's, it's at this level of detail, I think for this proposal, what it's not at, at is at the level of detail of, in year one, we're gonna do this little, you know, unit, and in year two, we're gonna do that, and we're not at that, we don't have that refinement, I don't think it's important.
But I think focusing on the community in Trinity County is, is a valid.
And we, but we did talk about that with Tom, you know, as far as the A-4 side, Joseph, I think.
So, when and how does the collaborative tune into this to give it direction?
You can give, I think, right now, broad direction, right? And then, I think, what, the way I, I think the way we did the last proposal is as it was being kind of written up and the thoughts were being put on, I don't think on paper, but on a screen, then we were sending it out and letting people kind of say, think that's, you know, kind of, here's, we could do electronic vote, you know, we've done that before, before it gets actually gets submitted, we could have the collaborative take one more crack at it, this is, we support this proposal, proposal. And then, I think at the October meeting, not only can we provide, or asking agencies to provide, the detail of how did the first round of Joint Chiefs money, how did that go, but we could then have a more detailed discussion of it, and because we've learned that between proposal and approved project, there's a lot of flexibility among agencies, yes, we could then begin to help, I think, fine tune and guide what we think they ought to be, and if they can approve, what they ought to spend the money on.
So what do you need from the collaborative at this point, other than broad acceptance that we want more money?
I think broad acceptance, and if they're, if you thought this ought to be an anchor kind of to it, and, or, or just broadly, like here's what I kind of think, potentially a, we think we ought to go forward in protecting, you know, community wildfire protection around the communities, consistent with community wildfire protection plan, you know, is a priority.
I think these projects demonstrate the difficulty we have in California with our Mediterranean climate, and that is that we have the issue of five months, six months out of the year where fire is really a dangerous, really tough thing to deal with because it burns in, in conditions that allow it to spread dramatically. And then we come around and then we tell people that we want to propose to do a lot of prescribed burning right around your community, and, you know, but we're gonna do it in such a way that, you know, it's safe and, but there's always smoke. So, we have this conundrum, I believe, and that is, we want fire, we want it at the right time, we want it small, and we don't want it to impact us, we don't want smoke, we don't want anything like that. And, and the problem comes in is that our landscape, especially around Weaverville, is fairly low elevation, so if, if you don't have trees growing there, you're gonna come back with manzanita brush generally, and that's what's happened all through the, the Tensent Gulcs, all the way up along through there, is, is fires, you get oaks and grasses would be the ideal situation, but generally, it, to maintain that, you have to have fire go through every two, three years, and if you wait 20 years, like here, you just have manzanita coming back to the point where you have to masticate it again and everything else. So, I'm not sure putting money into adding more fire around the Weaverville Basin every 20 years is going to change the cycle, and so, I'm not convinced that not burning is a better way to go, because then what do you have? Then you just have 10-foot tall mints.
Then you have West Reddigan.
Yeah, West Reddigan. So it's a, it's a, really a conundrum, I believe, because if you don't do it consistently, I mean, if every landowner along East Weaver Creek running up along, every fall, people went along and burned off all the oak needle, or needles and oaks and things along their property line, every year, you'd have grass and oaks, and that would be the ideal situation. But, these proposals are tough, I mean, because I, I believe in the idea of introducing fire back in, but when we wait 20 years to reintroduce it again, we just have manzanita that we have to masticate and then it sprouts and it's difficult to burn, it's, it's a tough situation, just letting you know.
John and Judy. Oh, Carol, I'm sorry, I forgot Carol. She's in here. Carol, John, Judy.
So, I would like to re, to say, I think, again, community wildfire protection abroad since would be great, and I love this project as an example of, I think, a bigger community, but needing the flexibility to provide little projects that would protect other communities, you know, like, I think of like the Hennings coming to the one-way entrance, and right at the entrance, there's a chunk of Forest Service land that is totally brushed over and, and I think it's some sort of legal letters of the mild, but that happened, but there haven't, so, no way to do that and the staff to do that, so, so that. happens, so no way to do that in a state that's do that, so sort of that could really help protect the community bit. One little tiny thing, if you have the flexibility in there to do stuff like that.
And I will say, one of the, I think unfortunate things, and, you know, Tom and Joseph and Arnold, those who were on the rack, you know, we, we funded a lot of these projects, and Steve Graves came in every year, and he had it well thought out, year one, you know, year two, year three, year four, year five, and he did these little CE's to kind of slip through the system. But one of the things that he didn't include in those categorical exemptions, those NEPA, he did not include maintenance. And so certainly, one thing we've learned is that, and, you know, Dan talked about this, when they, when they're doing NEPA now, you know, they always include being able to go in and at least get the NEPA done. Then you can find, it's easier to find the money. But it's unfortunate that all that investment, you know, wasn't covered by some, you know, some maintenance wide item in the, in the NEPA, you know, that we got to really, really, got to really stay awesome. What's unfortunate, Ted, is that we're having to do that for cuttings. Not there.
So one of the things I discovered while I was considering was, you don't have to do maintenance in NEPA. So we have a lot of projects up on the timber area of Gassen, you don't have no maintenance in them all, we're coming back to redo it now. That was a thing that a lot of planners didn't want to get there because they said that the conditions would change.
And NEPA would get stay alive for five years.
Yeah, but I worked on NEPA from 2003 right then. And you just have to do a consistency review, go through it, check it before.
We had John.
Judy.
Judy, Arnold, Jenna. You guys remember that?
So just to kind of support what Tom was also saying about different treatments and their viability, you remember, we had the 2001 fire, and, and then the Forest Service came in, and axed it in along Weaver Valley Road, did a nice job, then spaced out, oh, but there was a heavy fuel there left. No burn. The entry guard goal. And then several years later, they under story burn, a big knob there, part of the Browns project, I think. And then we had, I was tracking these fires, but I think it was 2013, came in, and, and it raced through the treated area, nuked the untreated street protection zone in Garden Gulch, and then they stopped it at where they had done the under story burn.
The Fire Safety Cult.
Yeah, and it was just remarkable how it all, you know, dealt with the place, and how some treatments were effective and others weren't when they were pulled up. So, but, so we got to keep after it, and even if some are effective doing, in every case, doing something is better than doing nothing.
Judy.
Well, certainly, of all the treatments that have gone on, we've watched its protection of the community. And so I'm in favor of whatever the folks involved feel what the right treatment is. And I can't mention, Don, we know we've had some close calls here in Weaverville, in terms of having the town go down. So I'm certainly in favor of what John said and what Tom said, just, we don't have to get any leads today of what the treatments are, but we have to keep the maintenance up.
Arnold.
So I was going to say something along those same lines. Regardless of whether there's been deficiencies in the past, regardless of whether there's difficulties, I think we can, most of us agree that we can deal with wildfire protection of our communities. Therefore, I'd brave enough to propose a motion that will support the concept of a two chiefs proposal, make the theme or the story be wildfire protection. And I think we should just keep at that title, not specifying certain communities, not specifying big communities, not specifying fire only or no fire, just what, you know, fuels production, the range and the speed of the flexibility.
For community wildfire protection.
Wildfire protection of our communities, the whole range of.
So who was the second?
Everyone.
Larry. Do we have a motion second? We have Jenna.
Yeah, I was just going to say something along those lines from the NRC standpoint. If we limit, you know, we're working on highlands, we already don't cost share on 100, 150, you know.
Defensive space.
So if we, if we limit us to that, it will be limited from the NRC side versus rather like communities, you know, if we make any more helpful in that. And then, within our screening, as far as our program description, we can specify community as big as a board and code to bill, but within our screening, we can put, you know, if there are certain distant, you can say within, maybe they get, they get screened higher, we can give them that priority that way.
I appreciate all this because I have the, I'll say it's the forgotten corner of Trinity County. So to get to the end of Trinity County in the UMI District, it's an hour from Catnip Pond to get to the UMI District. So if you think about that right now, I don't even know how many hours it takes to get here to Catnip Pond, but I wouldn't want to do it anytime soon. My district's almost five hours long, part of the border by south. So to be able to treat those in the arid, back in Palm, to be able to treat those communities down there, and the fire, the fire history down there, we haven't had a fire in the history of Forest Service in, in and around part of Catnip Pond, catastrophic fire.
Kenneth.
Well, first I have a question for you. You, currently with funding, you require a force management plan secondary?
No, they don't need to have a force management plan prior to be funded. And the force management plan is more of a, you know, I mean, you do have an inventory, but we put all that information, because the force management plan is not as extensive as something that like, you know, Forest Service write, it's something that I was probably probably together, so that they're reviews, that you see that we did the inventory. So they use both that term vaguely, but yeah, to the extent that you're editing him, we don't.
Yeah, because that's for only, and we have small landowner, and that's.
No, we don't.
Okay. So then the other thing, I've looked at a couple of prescribed burns on the first Timber Harvest Theater, the LM, and the second one, and in both of those, there were, there were areas where all the lean trees were killed. And because the fire was too hot, I don't know if they started firing down the base of the area and burned up the hill, but if you look at the trees that have died, you can see that it was from the fire. So I'm. Board, now?
Yeah, up there, right though, up the LM. So, you know, there's prescribed fire, there's prescribed fire.
Right. So I have a comment for the maker of the motion and all those seconders. So I'm assuming the motion included us sending a request to the board supervisors to support this project.
Yeah, however.
Yeah, okay. Not just us voting on it to support it.
Can we add, on the condition that we see a copy of the letter? You got four?
So just to give you a sense of time.
So about 7:00.
I have to get the letter to Judy by the 24th, yeah, for it to.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
That sounded a bit, I do worry that if we have a proposal with a certain time constraint, I don't think we have time to argue about this sin should be different or that sin should be deleted. So I'm comfortable coming back in October whenever and seeing the broad outlines of what we did, and from there, trying to encourage a kind of participation that Dan has allowed us to kind of suggest what our priorities are as the development or as opportunities arise. So I would say, my personal inclination is not worry about approving a proposal now before it goes down.
Okay. Larry, you're looking like you're.
Oh, you know, I.
Scratch of your chin.
Well, I wonder, does this proposal ask for, these are the project generalization, we want this much money, or this, these are the project generalizations, and then we just wait and see?
No, we ask how much we can give them, we'd like this amount of money.
We did that before, saying, we need this much money for all these projects, and then they gave us the money, and we didn't use it for those projects. We used it for, we don't. So there'll be some justification for any number, but I don't think we need to worry about it.
Take it back.
Here, now, to Arnold's statement about, because those need a specific letter, I think that we should also then be developing the oversight criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
Our oversight.
Based on our, based on our whole competition, that's what I'm, but we got time, we can charge that in October.
I agree. Okay, any other comments? You're just getting a bug away from your ear, or was that your?
I haven't thrown that away.
Well, then you comment.
You know, our community has been attacked four times by fire, and collapsed that guard goal, and the fire, killed by the water tanks. Clearing those bridges up, we're 100 feet on that, most of them are brushing, trying to get all the barbed bridges. If the fire is ready, they would just expand those bridges and not let that, you know, take cap, dig up the manzanita, let the gas, the water volume, mask the heat out again. Because we're due, might be 2021, have a fire coming, working some to the community, so just depends on the wind, if it gets over, the cap wipes out, you know, hits towards the, you know, goes into eastward with that. Yeah, that wipes out then.
Kenneth.
The, in the meeting we had over here, the first fire.
Car fire?
Yeah, car fire. A fellow stood up and said, you should all get out there with weed whackers, whack the weeds along the highway. And actually, I think that's not a bad idea, because we've had a number of fires that started, trailers lost their tires, sent out sparks. And I saw one down Bob, we were following, we didn't know we were following someone, and that happened to his trailer. There were all these fires along the road, and we got, pulled over, an RV pulling the trailer, and the tire come off, and all the sparks starting to fire right along the road. So I think that's a really good idea to treat those areas where the vegetation, particularly grass, went right down the road. I think we should encourage a cow fire.
Yeah, that might be a some, good something to take action on.
We've kind of already spoken to the cow.
So if there aren't any further comments, let's, let's see if we can vote on it. So we have a motion to support the broad concept of wildfire committee protections for communities, not specifying communities as our priorities, and if the board supervisors are, they're supposed to be in September. So everybody in favor of this, if a voting member raised your hand. Anybody opposed? Okay, so it is what has been approved. So we're, we're five minutes ahead of schedule, but, my big fudge is about, Jenna, do you still need relief? Can you do your thing afterwards? Okay. So you get an extra five minutes for lunch. Thank you, lunch, come back, keep it on. Got to, got to. Absolutely, people in that corner.
I've got their part.
You're right.
Only get one.
You only get one.
Don't worry about the vote, they'll come in.
Okay, so I think, I think the afternoon's got an easy part here. We did both of our major action items already. And we have some, I think, are fairly minor things to work through this afternoon. And so usually, naturally, we got our committee, the work group, kind of reports, but this time, the agenda also had, we've just been giving the sense that we had these groups that have been working, and there's been, for lack of a better term, a possibility there's been some mission creep in some cases, or just, are we still, do we still have the authority that you as a, as the collective as a whole has given these smaller groups? I just want to touch on and get a little talk if that works on some of those, and at the same time, brief, brief briefings from those subcommittees. And so that, see if we can knock that out for much less time than two o'clock. And so one of the committees that has been operating since the get-go has been the NRA Committee, and so a funny aside kind of story, when we had our NRA Committee, I can't remember which one, NRA Committee meeting last spring, yeah, people showed up because they, and they were disappointed because we weren't talking about guns. They thought we were. Something in the paperwork said, come to the NRA Subcommittee of the Trinity County Collaborative, and they thought we were going to talk about gun rights. But anyway, but they've become members of the committee now. They, they, they're going to stop.
Didn't they do my gun to the home?
They left their guns at home. But anyway, so, well, that committee probably is the committee that I was referring to that has had mission creep, it hasn't crept that far. So I want to talk about, first off, just what we've got from the NRA side of things that's new, and, and then we'll talk about the changes. So Sally, she's our recreation person, this, she'd actually, this is the stuff you know about.
Kind of. So we have five updates that we wanted to share. The Trinity Boat Launch Facility construction schedule is going forward as planned. The contract is presently up for bid, and we're going to review the bid package deals next week, and get signatures on the contract beginning of September, and then hoping to start construction and transportation after the day, when the busy season is, is over up there. The Minorfield Boat Launch Facility, we've finally been given the letter. Kelly, you here?
We're here.
We think we have the money for that, so we're moving forward with the penalty, the contract specification for the design contract. We're going to have to go up, forbid of the design contract for that, we can't do it now. The bridge was installed a month ago, so if you get a chance, go market trail out. No, that's what Juan, Marcus said.
Update on.
What part of the bridge is in?
I thought, they said they put the bridge in. vague. They were being vague.
So the bridge is in, but there's, you know, empty and dead, so it's just like sitting across the bridge.
The bridge deck.
You have to jump on one of them.
Okay, go take a jump. During the car fire, all the facilities at Lewiston Lake were evacuated, and all three of the marinas closed down, I'm not sure if you guys were aware of that. So the use of Trinity Lake was very low during the fire and is continuing to be very low, although all three marinas are now back functioning. This, this could affect, may affect our money available through the Recreation Enhancement for next year, so how much money we have to keep on the forest to pay seasonals and projects we want to do within the NRA that we use that marina funding for. And it also could affect the amount of unavailable range of fire projects for our special needs. It's pretty quiet up there, but Lewiston Lake is now not evacuated, and those campgrounds are back. And then, most of the specialists on the NRA are assigned to the fire sets, so I don't think they're doing a lot of, of the whole thing.
Tara.
Yeah, I'm getting on the horse people with that campground there.
Preacher Meadow?
Preacher Meadow. It was decided by our force supervisor that taking that campground out of the SRC contract was not going to be feasible.
The agreement's put.
Not at this point. So it's still all under SRC, and we are pushing SRC to open up next year as a campground.
And I was on a conference call with Alan Hill and Scott Russell, maybe in the last month, and Scott reiterated his strong desire to have that open, the campground, next season.
There is major water system issues at that campground.
Nice getting in over here. Open there. Sally, do you know if East Weaver's got any use as a group?
Uh, it has by our cover fire engines. So since July, I've been calling Kevin, the manager, and asking if there's any reservations. And if there aren't any reservations, I've had to block out, you know, the next week for the cover engines to stay. So we don't have to pay for them to stay in hotels as a cost-saving measure. There really has not been a lot of use up there in reservations. But the bathroom's open, so if you're liking, use the restroom.
So any, anybody, anything else to add on NRA and stuff? Or from her report?
Well, just saying the RCD, so the, the little story map thing, it's functional, so we have stickers.
The thing on the smartphone?
Yeah, so we have stickers on the new sign and brochure holders. So somebody shows up and they're human, they're sure they can't carry the sign along until it's on the trail. They can get the, for the thumbs back, a lot of people using it. When somebody, there was no older, older, they weren't in the show, they were walking out of the phone.
Terry.
The whole way to the trail. So it's clear, the AVA, the Gulf of AVA Trail is about fifteen to seventy-five. And the one that goes up on the ditches is the longer. And the YCC kids, they're out there trying to go up the longer trail and they don't know how to use power tools. So they're packing these, these hats.
And see, like half, half, come down trees.
They're beavers.
Any, that's, that's, that you're reporting, right? So the thing that, as far as mission creep on this, and where I was thinking that maybe the full collaborative needs to kind of, you know, give some guidance to the committee is that at the end of the year, I guess it was 2017 into early 2018, the forest kind of revamped and reorganized their recreation staff. So that now there's, you know, the committee seems to be dealing with not just NRA, National Recreation Area, issues and lands and facilities, but more broadly west side recreational kind of issues. So Sally will bring to us that we need to change the use of such and such a campground. Or, you know, we're having trouble over here with vandalism and how we deal with recreational trails in this place or that place. So my thought was, long ago, according to the, you know, the stuff that I've read, you guys had a recreation committee. That then, I guess they dropped recreating, you know, and not coming to these meetings. But there isn't this recreation committee anymore. But it seems to me that the NRA committee is really doing that and that we ought to maybe bless that, that effort on their part. And so if they come as a committee and say, we want to talk about campgrounds over, you know, in Rattlesnake Creek, in drainage, you don't say, well, they can't talk about that, that's not the NRA. Who's going to like the list? Move, motion. Second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? What was the?
Yeah.
To broaden the committee from being the national recreation, potentially being the recreation west side, west side recreation.
So the only discussion I would say is, that would be wonderful, you know, if people helped the forest just have one third of the topic. But from a collaborative perspective, and we really, really, really should invite people from the collaborative. There aren't in the norway areas a common, you know, us norway folks, we don't really know what priorities are outside of the NRA. So we need, we need more influence. And then the second thing is, it's less than we've been asked as far as the district manager participating for the NRA perspective. But I think Joe would have to be there, just being the district manager from the rest of the west side.
Terry.
I'm trying to break right ourselves, not west side recreation. I'm trying to make Trinity recreation because the Trinity, or essentially the Trinity National Forest of West.
So you have the whole forest, the holy Trinity?
Trinity, for the most part, it's the whole, so NRA, the Cott Creek District.
Nobody had paid for it to.
Well, that's the Trinity. Trinity National Forest Recreation.
Just because of the failure, past name. We'd like to change our name too. I got people working. Last member of the recreation committee and our whole, we're not the best name, didn't do, I think we need name change.
I'm trying it.
Okay, so we had a motion, second, comment that we need more broadly, yes.
We can ask a person's name.
Cool. If it's not NRA. Okay, so we can go to DLM, that's great. If no further discussion, then a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Okay, so you asked unanimously. You know, Cannabis Committee, just, I don't know that there's any mission creep or anything like that, but I think you've got a bit of an update?
A bit of an update, and that is certainly a little, a few years ago, we decided to get an idea from Morad Gabriel. The college, you can pick, in several colleges, research center to come here because he's been so central to much of the cannabis, trespass cannabis eradication and inventory of those areas. And works very closely with the Forest Service, she has worked with him. So he has agreed to come in October, perhaps with his coworker, Dr. Greta Wenger. He was out in the field at the present, so he's got to come back and tie some things up to make sure whether they will both be able to come or just one or the other.
So for agenda building, then, for an agenda item for October?
For October, and what can we turn, be something to speak about? Be thinking about what you might want to add to this, because we're just now putting together with him what he will speak on. And when is this synopsis, basically, of what they've done this year? What we can do to help the trespass grows in the future? And what we can do, some security or interface with the general public, a good idea? And whatever else we might want to suggest, this will be discussed in the next few weeks with him. And Carol's been projecting with that as far as.
Yeah, we, we have another meeting before October? We haven't had a meeting in a while.
A Cannabis Committee meeting?
Yeah, both meetings, it was assessed about incoming.
Right, no, I think Carol's asking, is there going to be a committee meeting between now and October?
If we want one, that would be fine, but if it wasn't planned, then I don't, yes.
Carol.
Yeah, we have a lot of other things on the agenda though. Trying to figure out, so what we discuss in the committee is, you know, it's multiple steps, you have to figure out where the throws are. What resources they need, what's the, the, you know, the, so I, as soon as I, she's at the already finished, it's going to be a, a program impact. And I'm still at the, um, Hudson Collaborative, help push resources to prevent the top enforcement, so.
I think Murad's going to be able to cover all of this.
That's what he does, questions should be coming to the committee. So all, all those steps that you just described, Murad does, all of them, so.
No, but I mean, the. Can you help with the meeting first then, so we ask this, or? I'm just really like, trying to figure out how we get LEOs, how we, LEOs out there and get more, you know, that prevention, or. We can discuss that. Well, you can, it's difficult to get them, you have to think of the individual needing, like a tryback.
Well, maybe, maybe a, a, a bridge between him being here in October, or being here for a committee meeting. Maybe he could join by phone, if he could be here in person, or a committee.
Because you won't get him twice. I mean, I just worked within this, this last week, and when it comes to LEOs, they're trying to fill jobs right now. They're actually only, the problem is, the forest itself is receiving the individual activity, the Hudson Training or the OPI Center. And so that's very costly. You may have noticed right now, there's a lot of LEOs here and they're out here because of the fires. So there's a task force here working on cartel and trespass grows. We took one off of Forest Service yesterday. And last night, they confiscated two thousand pounds of processed marijuana, five pounds of hash and five pounds of heroin.
So that's, that goes for the committee, so we can kind of get everyone out and then figure out. So that's the collaborative role, so that's like bottom line, like, okay, we've been conducting one, but now.
What's going to be the ask?
Yeah, what's the ask for the collaborative, that's figured out, other than that's.
So.
LEOs are WO employees.
Except for what?
So our, our, our LEOs on our forest are WO employees.
Right.
Washington office.
But that, that, that doesn't mean we can't, this group can't take a position on it.
Take a position, you know, like that, in our case, we've got.
So I don't really want to have a Cannabis Committee meeting right now, but.
Well, you know, last time this committee formed, I'm going to say, five years ago, we really ended up at one point where I think we're, it's the same problem. There's just never been enough funding to put boots on the ground on the public lands on these trespass grows. I mean, Weaverville's been without an LEO for a couple of years, we just got one. So it's a funding issue is, I think, the big overarching problem of not getting enough LEOs around the region. And until that gets solved, I mean, I'm glad they're, they're doing these various sweeps here and there, but there has to be an ongoing, you know, never letting up if you want these guys to go. So maybe that's the ask, yeah, I think we did a board letter five years ago asking for funding.
Clark, so I think that, very simple, how can we help? Talk to the people who are. How can we help with the?
Larry, this person, he's pretty in Trinity County, this law enforcement, and all that stuff.
He knows I'm like a first, first name business.
He's engaged with that.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the Cannabis Committee. So Fuel Break Work Group, I don't know that you have any more, do you have any other project updates? We talked about pilot project to the extent that we, and because we don't have anybody from the office here, talked about first four year. Okay. Joseph.
Well, I had a discussion with Scott Russell, two or three weeks ago. And he is under the impression that the Fuel Break Work Group does not have the support of the full collaborative. So I asked if we revisit that on, at this meeting and, and have a vote to see if that's the case. I mean, we've all, everyone on the Fuel Break Work Group has put in a lot of time on this with the assumption that we're representing the collaborative. And if that's not the case, we need to know. So I think at the end of the discussion here, we do need to vote and see if we have the super order now.
Okay, so any other project specific kind of updates? And then I was going to take up that issue. No? Okay, so Joseph's comment, so where are we at? So you guys, who's Scott Russell? Scott is the forest supervisor. They don't like on a chest training. Larry.
Well, I, we had suggested we open up that subcommittee to put it in line with every other subcommittee that we have in the collective. And be also aligned with every other collaborative based resource management group that exists. But none of ever say, point us, not you.
Okay. John.
So I have to agree with Larry Winters here. I, at first, I, I disagree with him, when the group, subgroup was forming, that's like, okay, these are, this is the core. Let them get established and get a working relationship, proceed with their work. But I think that, I think you made a period of time that's passed. And I, I just think we're cutting off our most spider face, shooting ourselves in the foot, whatever you want, you know, it's just. What would it hurt to let these guys get in now like four or five times?
So the only thing I worry about is the same thing that happened to the Forest Service, which is when we have new members come in, nutrition turnover. So everybody knows how long the need to process takes. If we have somebody that comes in with a few points, then, and the, the second group is not agreeing on something at the end. And so like right now, if I had a one month delay, a two month delay in any of the list right now, we're talking a year. I lose a year because of that, because this is a base season. So I worry about those kind of things. And so if, if the group is being effective and they're being supported by the collaborative, then there's no member that wants off. I'm not sure what the need is. That's what I really, my big worry is, and the worry that my community has about me taking detail. When I announced that, one of our citizen meetings, I was taking the detail, I thought I was going to mention. Because.
Carol and Larry.
Well, there's a transparency issue, it does, while I was talking to Scott Russell, he said, only these people are allowed to, to, you know, make that conclusion, it just seems like you're afraid of others. Just decreases the value of what we're saying. So what I really say in this room, I suppose, is that I would have just a question, a little bit more, can you do this in the past number? There wasn't, but a little bit more looseness with, besides your message to this.
So Larry then.
Well, I just, I want to bring up, when we first started, we had, you know, a professor from Humboldt State who specialized in alternative seed resolution. To your point, and from that came collaborative-based resource management, which sole purpose is to take these different viewpoints and work them out before there's any issues and before you put a project down. So that there is no coming, someone coming in from that field disputing something. That's the whole point of us being a collaborative. And to say now that, well, this group, you know, we don't want to have disputes. Now, our whole existence, I mean, it's a, it's a scholarly subject, collaboration. Every one of them says, participation is crucial. And I just don't understand how we can pretend we're a collaborative group and yet don't follow what collaborations, our successful collaborations are meant to do. And so just to me, it's like a, a process faulty habits.
Jared.
Just to comment to Carol's point, the small group has never made a decision without coming to this bottom first. Like, so for that transparency. And I'm wondering if it's really two different discussions, the one that Joseph introduced and the one that Larry introduced. The membership of the small group and/or the support of the group as it exists now. So I think they're both worth talking about, but definitely, but I think they're.
I think the, the collaborative, you know, supports what you guys have presented to us. But I just wonder sometimes if what is presented to us is kind of. to us, but I just wonder sometimes if what is presented to us is kind of narrowly focused that it could be broad perspective, you know, because it is, I'm looking at the reason why the group, say, the collaborative has this discussion, and here's the pros and cons, and here's what we came up with. It's kind of like, here's the pros and let's go. That's just, because we don't know. You guys are the group that kind of entertains.
Are all the members of the subgroups still actively participating in its functions?
Yes, as far as I can, very active. And that's one of the things that I think everybody needs to think about. This is, it's, I mean, probably dozens of hours of need, if not more.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I get the sense of, of really, it's realistic to limit the size of a subcommittee. An analogy is there, there's a really big meeting Monday in Tahoe, they call it the grand bargain. The governor's going to be there. It's a discussion of the, of the Georgia towns. And, and I thought I would be there, you know, but they're not letting me come. So I, so I gotta, I gotta work through a smut representative that's going to be on there, I still haven't been in once, but it's unrealistic to every utility in the state have a, have a representative. That'd be the same with the group here, I mean, you gotta give the, the subcommittee a reasonable size so that it function, otherwise it's the full collaborative, it's not a subcommittee anymore. And I think there are other subcommittees, we haven't run into that problem, it's making more problems getting to you. But, so I think it's realistic.
I'm sorry.
So this is a question about whether he thinks there's complete support for the shade and fuel break project, is that it? Or just the coordinator?
The work, the work group is.
The question is, why does he feel that way? I mean, is it because he doesn't think that enough people agree with it, or because he has heard back from a discussion that happened on the Trinity County, the list of, in which someone posted, the shade and fuel break project is not supported by two members of the collaborative. So I'm not sure where he's getting his information, but that, I mean, why, why so he, when we had a vote, came up, and we all voted for it, why is he now thinking that something is wrong? Where did he get that information?
So, look at Arnold, Joseph, but one thing is, I think, certainly, we have a new forest supervisor, a learning curve, trying to figure out who and what we are and why we exist in the context of the collaborative that he's worked with, you know, in his previous jobs in the Southwest, you know, multi-state, these things. So I think that may be part of it, you know, just a learning curve on his part. So Arnold, Joseph.
The problem is actually older than that, because Dave Myers, more than once, several times, we would say, Dave, why hasn't this war happened? Why hasn't it happened yet? And he sort of, him and Hans say, well, I don't really know, since it's what the collaborative didn't even want. He said, well, we just, we told you. And, and so then we went back and, and as one of the several times we've gone to the full collaborative, and said, you know, full collaborative endorsed, what we had, and then a few months later it happened again. So something is making the forest supervisor wonder, at least, whether it's someone specifically talking to him, or some other staff, pressing information, I can't really say, but it predates the group's doctrine.
So Joseph and Larry Winters.
Well, he didn't disclose to me where he got that idea, just that that was in his mind, that he did not have the support of the full collaborative. Then one thing I like to remember, or have everyone remember, the first two years, we didn't get anything really nailed down in terms of projects on the forest. It was, we had a lot of uninformed rhetoric, some people had a lot of discussion about what they didn't know about, weren't even aware of the forest plans and, and the constraints within those plans. And we talked, and we talked, and we talked, and we didn't get anywhere. And then all of a sudden, we found that we had a, a subcommittee appointed, and we started meeting. And I must say, I'm very impressed that all eight members of the, of the work group have managed to go to the field, and we've got a lot of time invested in this. I've spent at least 50 days going to meetings in Tom's office, and Dan's office, and field trips, and, you know, we, we seem to be able to come up with these ideas and get all get in agreement. We're a very harmonious group in terms of making decisions. The fire killed the fuel breaks, that was one field trip. We went out and looked at the burned forest, and we all came to an agreement where to proceed. So we do have, we do have an excellent working relationship with one another, and there's a reason that we exist as an exclusive group. So anyway, that's my take on it. I think we're doing a good job. If we're not, I'd like to hear about it, because I've gone to too many meetings if, if I'm spinning my wheels.
And, and John.
So I have to say, it's a fairly diverse group to deal with. So that's one thing I think I'm thinking through, and I realize is, the diversity there is pretty broad. Uninformed rhetoric, I liked, I liked hearing that just now, and the lister, they know together. So yeah, that was my project, they got called in on the lister, and there's three issues. And they're document issues, and they're completely misunderstood, this is really written on. And so sometimes you log things, you come up with estimates, that's not hard and fast, but that's underneath a document, you have to deal with. Can't take that and extrapolate it into other things. And then, as you all know, when you write research papers, you have a lot of reference documents. There's one reference document that shows up time and time again without uninformed rhetoric. So quite frankly, the guys on the group all knew that what was said in there, there is probably not one cent worth of correct information.
So I can. John.
I'd like to see us reach a compromise on this if, if possible. And what I was thinking, I was about giving Larry Winters like observer status or something. He's not a voting member of the committee, but invite him to your field trips and your meetings, and if he can make it fine, so let him come in as an observer, and give him a foot in the door, and throw him a bone. And if, if, if somebody, you know, subsequently drops out, he's been trained, he's familiar with your procedures, he knows your personalities, what's it going to hurt?
So I have a couple of thoughts over to Larry Winters.
Well, I'm already familiar with all this stuff, too. It's not like I'm just a rookie on the front side of things. I want to say to you, it wasn't me, I've never bad mouthed the collaborative or any subcommittee to Dave Myers or the dude I, I've never done, so just to let you know, it's not me throwing dark, I, you know, I can just tell you straight.
Yeah, I can.
I'm doing right in public. But, but still, the fact remains, and our forest supervisor, who just came from a huge master stewardship agreement project, understands what collaboration is. And they don't need somebody telling them what's going on here. It's obvious that we have a subcommittee that's closed, and I understand at a state level you can't buy every utility to it, but this is a county-based, community-based group that's supposed to be inclusive, that's the part, the definition of a collaboration is. And the fact that we have one that was, the membership was self-chosen, program, but it was until he asked us to approve that membership. But the point being, that, that collaborative groups do not have close section, goes probably against the grain of what a collaboration should be, and that's going to be obvious until we change it.
Ross and Larry and Clarence. Ross.
We have very few successes in our collaborative. This subgroup is one of the, that we're, a success that we're having. It seems to be doing a fine job. They're not independent, we vote on everything that they, that comes up. If they, if they want more members, they have them, you know, it seems to be working. These seats are really bad in the back row. They're kind of old. And I'm sick of it, and I'm sick of this, having this discussion over and over again.
Larry.
Hey, that's it.
Okay. Well, come earlier and you get better seats. This is, this is festival seating. Larry and Claire.
Okay, well, I have two thoughts. One, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's worth it, so let's leave it alone. And then the, the second thought I have is our problem, it's systematic problem that we've had from day one of this collaborative, is with the Chastity Trinity National Forest. The former SO there, Sharon Haywood, we had a culture established in Chastity Trinity, she was there for a long time. People stayed there, worked with her, that accepted her cultural view of how the Forest Service was supposed to relate with the public. That culture has stayed on. Terry Simon Jackson is still there as the deputy. She doesn't accept the collaborative as a legitimate entity to even deal with. She said that right through our face. That's our problem with Chastity. And I believe that Scott Russell shows up as the new head, and all he's hearing is negative stuff about us, there's that. I, I believe that that's what's, what's created this problem with him. We just need to get a vote of confidence from you all to make sure that he understands that, that, that stuff that's coming from us has been vetted through you, and it is a collaborative decision.
Clarence.
So you brought up the same, we have a new forest supervisor, and he's running the eight, and I agree with you 100%. When he was here a couple of months ago, he left this on, and it's out there.
Last meeting I missed.
Right. And so even though I hate to read documents like this, I have spent some time. And you don't have to go very far into the document to identify something that needs to be done. Regarding the Chastity, we serve as well, actually, the secretary. But he says, in the document, it says, in 2011, stakeholder members and the forest have assigned a memorandum of understanding, formalizing collaborative processes, binding the agency and the collaborative. We have never gotten a lot from Chastity. And we've been saying for a number of months, I've been saying for a number of months, we're going to have to sit down and figure this out, because the Chastity has related to us on the basis of, I agree with what Larry said exactly, and the overall tone is, we don't really know what a collaborative is, but you're not one. And that's been going on and on and on, and it seems to arise, in particular, when there's been a long period of lack of productivity, and that becomes a whipping point once again. Now, in Scott Russell's situation, when you look at this document, which he presented as a really good overview of what's going on in the forest, and he endorsed this completely, he's going to want to have the collaborative in his property. He's going to want it structured in a way that everybody agrees is a good way to operate. He needs time to do that. I support him in wanting to give the collaborative process fluid. I want to live forward, I'm not developing past actions, I'm just going to sit down. So it's a limited, but my, my, we have to go forward, we're in a new day of fire crimes. Whether it's because of years of drought, or whatever it is, we're in a new day of fire crimes. And our very existence as a county is a threat from wildfire. So I think two things about going forward. Number one, I think we should try to work with the new forest supervisor about creating an organization that they and we are comfortable with in the forest. But secondly, if the forest supervisor wants to suspend the projects that we have already going until this can get done, that's a complete nonstarter for me. So work with him and to get the organization where he needs to go and to have, to be more effective, and they will bite into it, to keep the projects that we have going going.
Jude.
Was there some of you already?
No, I don't think so.
Well, I understand what Larry had mentioned, and there clearly is a cultural divide between how Chastity on some level works, and I listened to Dan Gill, who certainly has an entrepreneurial type of approach to get his projects done, so thank you. I know it's very frustrating for everybody, working at times with Chastity on some of the bigger projects. I think it probably, we talked about this in December, when, probably didn't help the perception of the group of the eight or whatever, when that letter went out, Hansai saying, you're kind of with the collaborative, and you came out against Terry, I guess she was applying her position. I don't think that helped the case. Regardless, we have a new, new guy in town. I've been wanting to meet with him since he's come on board, so I'm happy to address and go through the history of the board and setting up the collaborative, with, working with all the agencies. Larry could be right, because he is a person, he could be hearing a lot of stuff from staff, I don't know. So I just, there just needs to be a reset perhaps of the eight, the government to government application.
So he's not been to the board of supervisors yet?
Very briefly, just very briefly, they did a quick introduction, I'm going to say in early July, with Joe, of course, but I do need to sit down with him anyway.
So he's not talking with any of the supervisors one-on-one, they?
Uh-uh, not that I'm aware of.
Right, they, we, we saw him briefly when we had. Jared.
Correct, right. And that was very brief, very brief.
Okay, so at the moment, I don't see anybody, hands up, so I've got a couple of thoughts. I have to support it, but is it only online? So would you, in turn? So a couple of observations, maybe. So one is, and I certainly understand, not to say that, you know, I wasn't involved with the collaborative when the Fuel Break Work Group got set up, I, you know, I've kind of tried to read collective memory to get a better understanding, it's a little, little fuzzy to me as to, you know, the, the nature of it, the closed membership, but it, it was, you know, it clearly was approved by the collaborative as a whole. And one observation I have about, you know, you know, opening it up and getting more people involved in the, you know, in the forestry side of things is, October of last year, the full collaborative meeting, we had a full collaborative meeting, right, and it was a field trip to go look at the Joint Chiefs project. And for all practical purposes, the only members of the collaborative that went on that field trip for the full collaborative were the members of the Fuel Break Work Group, you know, with the, with the agency groups. So.
I had a.
Yeah, you, you had a conflict. Yeah, but anyway, so, so by, by and large, I think the group has been accepting of the heavy lifting that that small group has been willing to do, you know, pro bono, you know, on behalf of the group. On the flip side, on the transparency, or just the informing, the broader group, broader collaborative, I would say something that I think has been lacking, and I'm wearing my, I worked for government for a long time, and, you know, from the first day I was in government, you know, until the day I left, I went from hearing it to saying it, document, document, document. One thing that I think the Fuel Break Group has been weak on is conveying in, except during the meetings every other month, the deliberations and thoughts and decisions of that group as they're being developed. You know, so what we've got, as far as a body of work, that if, if we had to survive what a boss of mine used to call it the cement truck test. Cement truck test was, if I stepped, he'd say, why do you, I'd say, why do I have to write that down? That was just a phone call. And he would say, because if you step out on the street running down gate by a cement truck, you know, who's going to know what was in your hand? You as a group, maybe it's a logging truck test now, but as a group, if you guys are all standing in one place, at the same time, and something happens, we don't have a very good record to carry forward, you know, the good work that you've done. So I, I certainly think something that would ameliorate to some degree. So I certainly think something that would ameliorate to some degree the concerns of the closeness is a greater openness to share your incremental deliberations. How did you get to, you know, diameter plus X number of feet kind of thing? Joseph?
Well, when Shiloh was the manager of the RCD, Shiloh came on all our field trips and meetings and took notes and posted them.
Yep, that was in my urging.
We did have a record of our deliberations, whether they were field trips or whether they were at the ranger's office.
And since Shiloh's left, I know I haven't seen an email that, hey, we're getting together, we're going to be meeting at the Forest Service, we're going to go on field trips.
Kelly, Larry does.
So we need to, we need to do that better.
I just figured he's too busy with the old meeting to do that. But I did forward.
So I think that's a very important piece that gets between Shiloh and...
Yeah, and, you know, and yeah, I agree.
Because I wouldn't see emails about tours.
A related struggle that I have is, you are a very, I think, effective collaborative group so well that you don't have somebody who is officially a spokesperson. So sometimes, you know, I'll get a phone call or an email from one of you saying, I need this on the agenda. And then the next month, you know, I get an email or a phone call from somebody else saying, I need to... It's never even in the context that the Fuel Break workgroup thinks we have to have, we need this agenda. It's as individuals. And so it's kind of a funky, I mean, you're in this, you know, kind of weird space that it is a little hard to get your hands around...
It's a coalition of chiefs, though.
Yeah. I know, but, you know, again, that's somebody who has to... And then, and then when we put something on the agenda, we catch crap, you know, because the full collaborative didn't agree to put it on the agenda. So we just need, I think that those are parts of what need to be, and, you know, need to be finessed.
Those are most rewarding pieces of success.
Tom?
Yeah, it seems like, you know, what we've done isn't rocket science. We have one piece of paper, white paper, that says, this is what every fuel break, roadside fuel break, plantation thing should look like. Six Rivers and Chastity Trinity both have the exact same paper. And that's it. If anybody wants to go out, I'd gladly avoid every meeting, every field trip and say, okay, that's what you're doing, what's on this piece of paper? Because that's all we do, is say, okay, we'll go out, check the mark, see if what they're marking fits with what's on this piece of paper. It's not rocket science.
Go ahead.
And it is, the, you know, this collaborative's been two years trying to dig out this basic principle about mission, vision, and mission. And the Fuel Break workgroup is not a governing body, it's a task force that goes out and implements policy, operating, and...
So we can change that.
Dee?
I did spend about an hour with the supervisor before his meeting. He's got a lot to learn when it comes to Trinity County. Came from the area where he was able to get joint agreements.
Yeah.
He's never going to get that. Our working group doesn't have that. I don't agree with Larry and Joseph about both things, but we've come up with a solution that we're working on. And we're never going to, the reasons collaboration doesn't function at both, doesn't ever make any decisions. In fact, we've made decisions as a working group, whether we liked it or not. And certainly, you know, my actual optimism, Larry and Joseph, a lot of people have spent a lot of time into this. We put time into it too, but I've found through the people helping me do it, which makes a big difference. But we need to communicate that. Scott's got a lot to learn when it comes to Trinity County. It's not, we need, he had the group sit down and they all gave the joint agreement for what they're doing with management. We're never going to do that. See, this isn't going to happen. We have two divergences of views. And I don't think we're ever going to change that. I think they're wrong.
While we're trying to... It sounds like a collaboration. Sometimes I... My last comment is, Kelly's told me that Joseph Colvin suggested we need to have this discussion and hopefully a vote. I said, what the hell is Joseph thinking? Why bring this up now? You know, we can assume we've got... There's never been a vote to say, we don't agree with this group. But now, here we are, you know, and we're not listening for emotion, some sort of...
But any comments?
One thing, I was like, I told Scott, and this is my number one point, his biggest problem on the west side is he did not hold his people accountable. They've never held their people accountable. Until that changes, we're never going to need that. And what are all we do as a collaboration on the Chastity Trinity on the west side? Well, that's the facts, folks. Unless we get some leadership that holds people accountable on this force and timber management, nothing is ever going to happen here. Dan Gill's took our proposal and went to work with it and did something with it. They have chosen not to do that.
Larry, go ahead.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to add. This is, they have not been following, they're not asking for our opinion, they're coming forward with things of, well, Joseph was going to bring up the program work. I mean, it's a joke. We have been to a number of those meetings. We try and have influence on it. They ignore our input and they just go ahead and do what they want to do. Do what Kelly, they didn't consult with us ahead of time about that. They're just, they just do what they want to do.
Yeah.
John?
So I got to ask Ken, so he's been doing some of the prep work for the pilot project. And can you, from your perspective, would you contrast Six Rivers versus Chastity? Is there a difference of scope, what do you see? Why is, why do Six Rivers, is it because they're doing smaller chunks, Six Rivers or Chastity, they're bigger, right?
Well, I haven't worked with Six Rivers, so I can't tell you.
Well, I thought maybe you were acquainted.
So just to kind of, kind of bring us back a little bit.
Just to pick up on that, it's not unusual for the small group to get emails from Dan, asking for a conversation, opinions, feedback, never from Chastity.
Well, so I could just follow up. So, I mean, Chastity Trinity is doing all this groundwork, getting all of this, I mean, they spent two seasons studying data and analyzing it. And, I mean, Six Rivers doing any of that, or you just got...
No, we did it. We did it. We did it in six months.
We did it in house.
We did it with, we did it with our folks, we did it with Nick's folks, and we did it in less than six months. So here's, here's a little difference. My former forest supervisor held us accountable. These guys know me pretty well. And if I wasn't producing, I would be, I wanted to be a ranger, period. And that has happened to rangers this year. The other thing is, I also enjoy the community that I work in, in my community out there. That part of Trinity County wants to see these projects, they don't want to see 2015 water. They would rather see the logs going out on the truck than standing in their landscapes. And so the other part of it is, there's a lot of ways to skin a cap. And so if you want to go very traditional Forest Service way, where you start at point one and you go all the way to 10, that's fine. It's going to take you forever. I've seen CDs take two years. I don't do that. I start one, two, and three, four, five, and six, six, seven, and do all that at the same time. And so there's just different ways of doing it. It's called risk. I take risks. I mean, someday I'm going to get burnt. I'll do a project and I'll get burnt somehow because I'm doing the process all at the same time. But that's just the way it is.
There are the can-do forests, there are the can't-do forests.
Okay, so what about Ken?
Let me allow you a little bit about what I've seen. If I had to have this project from the first, they had me going out there and looking at all the buffers and identifying harvests off. So looking for commercial timber and commercial timber that you can get out of it, because there's a lot of places you can. So I would have done that at first and then done the inventory plots because there were a whole lot of inventory plots. I think there was almost 500. And a lot of them were even in areas that you're going to harvest. So it's just a waste of time.
So that's the way we do it. We go out, so I have, I have a forester, one. I don't have any technicians, I don't have any of that stuff, other than what I drew from Nick. And she went out, we laid out GIS, she went out, started making recommendations, move the buffer here, move the buffer there, fish and all that, made those things. We got the general plan down and we started hitting, these are commercial opportunities, these are. When that was done, the plots went in. And so that's the way you do it. If you, if you, if you put out 5,000 acres to like a heritage group to go do archaeological surveys and then you cut it down to what you want as a project, you've wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars in personnel. You can't do it that way. That's the part of the forest.
So all this seems like...
You know, the ID team, I told people that I'd come up with all these field notes. You know, there's 100 plantations in that pilot project. And I had field notes on all of those plantations and the buffers. And nobody had seen anything like that, had any information like that, that these are people who are specialists who have written reports and they have nothing to use. So it's kind of like we didn't see the Navy, like they just fielded.
Might I make a motion that the, you might, forestry group is current makeup enjoys the full support of the collaborative.
Is that a screw-down motion? Time now? Can I speak?
The motion, the questions on the table is a shade of Fuel Break.
It's a Fuel Break work, Fuel Break work group. Okay, who, was there a second? So a second. Okay, so now we can have discussion. No, wow. Any further discussion? Terry, your phone going to ring now?
Yeah. Turn it off. I keep my phone back on. I don't want to. Sorry about that.
So they were going to add Larry Winter to their group perhaps? I didn't, I didn't hear that in the motion. Yeah, he... So what I'm saying was, I didn't hear that in that to, you know, if it's acceptable, Larry wants to join.
The motion was in its current makeup.
Yes. So I'm thinking, I don't think the paper of the motion is accepting your amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. So motion and a second, any further discussion? Kelly, this one I think we really need Kelly to give us. Okay, so all in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. All opposed to the motion, raise your hands. One, two, three, four. So we got to add two-thirds. Somebody of a higher class goes, 8%? 8%. Okay, you got it.
Six, sevens, 18, 20, 21. 18 out of 21 is six of the seven. Six of 100 is 16.
Say 1.8. Broke a couple of rings in there. I just...
It's 81.8%. 18 out of 22.
We have 81.8?
Yes.
81.8%.
Hey, okay, so you need to...
18 out of 22.
So you're going to need this new crack room tech.
Yeah. Tech version of things and then the... Okay, Carol?
Well, maybe in the interest of presenting an optimum case to the Forest Service in terms of the level of support of the Fuel Break work group, I would make a motion that the Fuel Break work group could, uh, very limited, as that's one additional.
Okay, so we have that motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Okay, any further discussion?
Just a question, so could a collaborative member make a motion to remove a person from the group?
That was supposed to...
Would you repeat the motion?
So the motion was to, uh, to add Larry Winter to the Fuel Break work group. And in the spirit of showing the board's possible collaboration that began.
I would go again to your motion if Larry hadn't been able to be included. So that might increase the...
We have, you can't do that because you had a motion that said you approved the work group's way of...
Yes. Well, you can have a motion and a second, you might not go anymore.
It would conflict with the first motion that we passed.
Got you. Larry, I would like to say thank Carol anyway, but it's not about me, it's about including this group. I agree with you. Okay, so Larry?
So I would pledge on my own, not for the group, on my own, to include anybody on the email chain of discussions so that you can be aware of what we're talking about, if that matters.
Okay. Do you want to have an input? Do you want to reply? So my question is, we had to write a letter to the new forest supervisor stating that the forestry subgroup is... I think we'll just use the collective memory. And tell them that. Yeah. What, do we need a motion or what color? I can go green, orange, green, brown. Joseph, I want to remind everybody, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Which apparently isn't giving you a motion, so there shouldn't be any...
So we need to undo that motion.
So I was just going to remind the group that anytime we make a decision that really counts for anything other than some technical, you know, D by how many feet, you know, we break that, we break that decision to the collaborative. Every, every prescription that we've come up with, the collaborative has told it.
Bob?
So regarding a resident scribe, when Shiloh was coming to everything, there was a record of everything. And if we said, I assume that Kelly would be too busy to do something like that, that I would be in favor of having someone from facilitation, wherever that would be, somebody from RCD staff or Kelly or Adam. I would welcome you to be involved in any of our trips. And that's time to speak out, only one person on that group, but I'd like to let Shiloh get in that capacity.
I'll give you just a, a bit of a nuts and boltsy kind of, kind of thing, at least where we're staying right now. So like you guys, I pretty much donate my time to this. And... And at the moment, I may be wrong, but my understanding is, with regards to the Forest Service, I'm just, you know, Chastity, Six Rivers, all the agencies who, you know, benefit from our collaboration, if there is any money flowing towards the RCD right now to support this effort, I think you're down to probably keep box tops around, we would say.
Teamwork.
So that's, that's one of the things that goes in, comes into play is to have somebody from the RCD. You know, they, they got to get, you know, they got to have a code, you know, to charge you to. I'll, I'll help where I can, but, you know, kind of like this every Friday, 10 o'clock phone call thing, you know, I choose not to participate in things that I just, because I'm retired and won't have to do some stuff. So I may, may not, but there's an alternative, you know? As far as I know, everybody here, you know, in this room has basic writing skills. And so somebody from the group could in fact jot a few things down to be included, you know, and move on to the broader collaborative too, so. And that was something I was going to suggest. The recreation committee does the same kind of thing, right? To take it on and, you know, such volunteer, be the scribe and facilitator, you know? And buy a cement truck, then you're going to be on your own. And I think all the committee need to recognize that.
And in looking at what Scott gave us, it's pretty clear to me that there's some big money behind what they're doing. I would assume some big money, of course, and... I think that's one of the first things we can go after.
And I would say, I would say, I mean, I could say, you know... And, and, and I would say, I would say, you know, essentially fairness to agencies. It might also maybe the new supervisor at Six Rivers should be, uh, put a pinch on him too.
That's after the fire monitoring is done.
After, yeah. Kelly, if I talk a little bit about that, so.
Anyway. Yeah, Dan, Dan and I spoke to Dan a little bit about that. The rest of the money, and I'm willing to actually do that. Sure.
Okay. The other committee that, that I have recollections that functioned at some level was, you know, with, with a program of work committee, which last year, you know, kind of spun into, you know, dysfunction. So I don't know if there's anything or any particular approach or changes or anything we need, you know, I think we saw at a meeting in Hayfork a while ago, when we talked about program of work, is, I think Larry kind of brought it up, is, you know, we aren't necessarily be, our, our advice is not to get sought, um, as to what should be on the program of work, uh, but to the extent that we need to have and continue to do a program of work, I just want to bring that. Joseph and Bob.
Well, I brought this up way back when, that we needed to have this committee, and I've gone to every meeting, and it's been a total waste of time. At every meeting, they don't ask, what do you want us to do? They tell us what they are going to do. So we, we can read that on the sofa, so we don't need a, a program of work committee because it serves no function. Even Dan, who works with us much closer than the Chastity, he's never asked us, what do you want us to do next? He tells us. I've got a lot of ideas for him if he ever asks.
Do you think that might be why? So Bob.
My take is similar to Joseph's, but a tad different. So I've been, I've been to all the program of work meetings, and I thought we made real progress in being able to have a say in what was happening until the last meeting, P U D, and the last early winter, and I gotta say, Tom, off in my mind, and he said, it doesn't matter what you all say, this is our mandate, and that was number one. And number two was, all this time, you've just been telling me, he said, you shouldn't be telling someone higher up. We've been meeting for years, thinking we were meeting with the person we needed to know, and we said that.
Well, that, that works a little differently from them because I'm your, your advocate with the Six Rivers. And so when I go to the program of work meeting for the F L T, I'm the one that advocates for my district, and since eighty-three percent of it is Trinity County, I'm advocating for our projects. The other thing is, I'm also under a directive that my projects on my district will be collaborative projects. And so other than some small rural projects here and there, I am not to go outside of the collaborative and the work that we're doing. So the Six Rivers brand ourselves as a collaborative forest. No project on our program of work is not a collaborative project, not one. So that's.
Very good. That includes timber targets?
That includes timber targets, so you, you, the targets come to you, and then you say, where, where should we get it, or how do I know? So what has happened in the past, or I had to develop a five-year plan to move forward, and I told the collaborative, the group of eight, no matter what I do, it's gonna be following the collaborative and its prescriptions. So if I need to get an extra million more feet, then I need to go find a hundred more acres. And so that's the way that we've done it. I have targets, so my, my district produces over half of the volume for the Six Rivers. So I am less than twenty percent of the total Six Rivers land allocation, and I produce half of the volume for it. And I do it with projects that are coming in collaboration. So right now, we're finishing up some non-collaborative projects that people objected to in the past, and it caused me a lot of extra work, uh, but.
Did you learn your lesson?
So, yes, uh, so anyway, I think it's a different thing. It's just a different way of doing it.
So what is it, do we need to do anything? Just letting, you had committees kind of exist and kind of fade away, something going back to the way it is at the moment? Do we wanna try it? I mean, do we need, you know, it's never really been clear to me when the most effective time in the calendar year or the fiscal year is to have a discussion about program of work. I've only been to one meeting and, and I, you know, I promised that I would, another program. So I don't know what, what the pleasure is. Larry.
Yeah, Tom was really unprepared for that. He didn't have any, any document paperwork for us or nothing, and he's the only one ever in the agency.
And it was very different than what it was previously.
Right, and, and to, I don't know if I'm defending him or not, he seemed told that he needs two targets, and so, but he chose what they, where they were taken from. He didn't come to us to ask for those. But I think we still have a role, but we should be pushing hard about collaborations are becoming a big thing, and they are, you know, saying we need to work with the collaborative, and we need to stress that. And I'm also wondering about the national stewardship agreement. If that mechanism can help us in that regard, if we look on.
Judy, and then Larry.
I have two, two separate things. Is everyone aware of some big new change in the National Forest System strategy that was announced yesterday? Okay, so that might.
No.
No?
No.
So, uh, it was announced yesterday, the strategy will be based on new authorities granted to the Forest Service under the 2018 Omnibus Appropriation Act. These authorities include new C E's, C E's to approve forest health, road construction, longer stewardship contracting. Additionally, state and local governments will now have a lot stronger voice and greater opportunities to coordinate on forest health projects and use new technologies in forest management. Included is a detailed report, which I am not gonna see. So just, this just came out to our National Association on, on public land issues. Separate question, is there a way I can get a list, since we're five and a half years old, of those projects both on both forests, um, that are collaborative, you know, birth out of the collaborative? Um, I think we'll see a different perspective on Six Rivers versus Chester Trinity. So who can I get that from?
A list of, I'm gonna say that again.
Projects that have come out of the collaborative for both forests.
So some of them, Judy, were endorsement of, of like the West Side plantation thing? That was already in progress, and we endorsed it, but it wasn't our project.
I mean, I know it seems like a, a little bit of minutia to go through, but I would like to see, it's just good for evaluation.
I, I tell you, it's probably something that can be gotten. I'm not sure of the best.
Pretty short list.
So whether it was a recommendation or something that really did develop out of the group.
And then it's a further complication. Collaborative endorsed salvage project on the Chester T after the.
Correct.
The fire killed the Fuel Break.
Ten years ago when everything were in. Uh, but, so that developed, but it never happened. So do you wanna know things that didn't happen?
Sure. I mean, it's good to evaluate.
So I, I, Clarence came up with something, I think it was pretty important that we shouldn't let go by. We have a supervisor here today with us, and that's the conduit that we technically have to deal with Forest Service through, was the board supervisor. So Clarence said M O U with Chester Trinity. I think this would be a great time for the board supervisors to ask Scott Russell to come in and see about working out a M O U between how, how the Trinity Collaborative and the Chester Trinity Forest are gonna interact with each other. I think this is the perfect time to turn it straight.
So I, I haven't, I haven't seen the thing that Scott handed out, cause I've.
Well, just.
Gone, so. But I, but I, but I, uh, maybe it'll, it'll place concern, but certainly one of the things that I do worry about with regards to the collaborative's relationship with the federal agencies is the more formalized you make it, the closer you get to this line that says you're now, you have to go through the Federal Advisory Committee Act.
And that is.
And become formally approved by the Secretary. So I think we wanna be cautious about, is it an M O U, is it, or is it? I think the conversation with Scott needs to be, how do, how do we need to formalize this without crossing that line?
I think it's certainly, I agree that's a concern. It seems like possible to me to, uh, to structure such an agreement or, I mean, M O U as a memorandum of understanding, basically, which we both understand. The formal part can be structured as a M O U between the Forest Service and the board supervisor. And the text could say, uh, for all the forestry stuff, we'd like to start through the collaborative or run through the collaborative.
What about the agents of the board supervisor?
Well, it's certainly not impossible. Now, I think we need to pay my, we need to convince. It's certainly possible.
Yeah, I think it's possible, but we just need to be mindful of that, and mindful also that what we want to do is keep our relationship with the board supervisors fluid enough that what we don't get trapped in is that we're a committee of them.
Right.
And have to then follow the Brown Act because the Fuel Break Work Group's rules would change dramatically if you guys had to be a Brown Act committee.
And I think that's one of the concerns, me and Terry was a little confused when she made that explosive comment.
Yeah.
She was concerned about, uh, the whole process.
Right, and that was, and I, and I talked to Dave Myers about all that, and he said, well, no, you're not, you don't have to worry about back of Federal Advisory Committee Act because you guys are just a, a group that was allowed to come into existence by the board of supervisors. You self-select, you know, who, you know, you can come to meetings, you know, and you can become, not say anything, you can become a member. So the board doesn't appoint us, the board didn't sanction it, the board didn't adopt the charter or anything like that. It's been kept pretty fluid, and I think, you know, and that may be one of the differences between what Scott was involved in, you know, in Arizona, New Mexico versus what we've got going here. It's just stuff to be, you know, be a little bit cautious, be cautious about going to go into this.
So long time ago, when we first started at Rock, we were coordinating that the county supervisors and code on all national forests and other people telling them they control to see the work of progress and how their, the board income of the county this year has stood on the page by law that they should follow. But I have a popular moment here that means that Chester Trinity, this is work that we want done and supervised, and we have a collaborative that we're posted with, and you should argue with us and come to us and show us how much time we're dealing with and deals. How he does, because he has his, uh, prioritized that that's what he's committed. He knows he has to acquit this, so he's a collaborative type, you know, that's. Larry, twenty seconds.
Once it's gone to the left side, would it be beneficial to us to be more, a more formal group? Would it be more difficult for them to deny us projects or ideas that we put forward? Then we are a formal group, and, you know, that's the question that we have to answer. And also, you know, around that, here's a weird thing overall.
Yeah.
I'd like to shy away.
Good comment. And I don't know, I don't know if, you know, one, one, one thing is they could, they could just not want us to be, I mean, they could prevent us from becoming.
We've had issues where we signed on and sent it to the board supervisor, and they sent their letters out, and it's just.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, Scott, Steve, so we'll have a conversation with them and see.
Like, what's the best way to, yeah.
I think those are.
Right.
So we definitely don't want to go the way of the tamper.
Go with what?
Go the way of the tamper.
The Trinity Act of any.
Correct. That was, the, the Trinity Edacts for Android Council, the White House, the Trudy Group to the Trinity Restoration Project, which is an official thing. Everybody has to go through the White House to get approved. It takes, it was taking almost a year to get people approved. They have our deadlines, we have to uncharter, we have to re-charter, and then they decided to defund it, just, and nobody knows why, and the whole organization went away. So we do know.
Exactly.
Clarence.
Uh, speaking of opportunities, uh, I agree with Larry and others who say this is a, a point in time where you have a great open, uh, fires, great focus, what we're gonna talk about here. The Secretary of Ag, Chief of Labor Force, Regional Board of Charge, all directly in the national forests to get going, get some work done, good collaborative. Some of us have heard Randy West to be more of a say, it's that unit, uh, the Chester Trinity, so there's a duty motivation outside of figuring out working relationships.
I agree. Okay, so I'd like the program of work committee to just kinda be there.
It should still be an agenda.
It should be, and, and we should still talk about program of work.
Right, that's the whole, but not a special committee.
We should never stop this interview.
Okay, so, uh, updates and rebuilding stuff, we're a little behind, but that's okay because I don't know what to say. So Jenna was gonna give us kind of updates on N R C S kind of things?
Yeah, I, not much changes this year. I have a really quick update is that, um, today I just got an email saying that a part-time grant for a forester with R C D was approved, so that's now going to be submitted. I remember they, I mean, they, they didn't spend it while I was in the state today. Um, so we should be able to, um, we did have someone in mind, well, it was a movement for Perry Nichols to come back part-time, but she decided not to. And, um, we had someone in mind that actually, um, ended up applying for the SOA corporations job and ready. Um, so I'll be kind of looking out, try to see if there are any other options for that. We also have got word that you will begin Perry Nichols' full-time position advertised in August.
And that's for a forester?
Yeah, and it's actually gonna be advertised, um, G S nine with promotion potential from eleven. Um, so hopefully that helps with recruitment and recruitment. Um, so we're just working on the details about if it will be advertised, um, government-wide or open to the public. It has some issues with it being open to public, um, in Weybeka and also in our area office in Red Bluff because the veterans preference, um, comes into play when it's open, so they, they have had, um, stuff, you know, issues with that. Um, so we're still kind of, um, you know, fading power, you know, the advertising. It's definitely not going to be at N R C S, it'll be open to at least the, uh, the red light, so. So again, that's in August, and hopefully we'll have someone, um, you know, September.
So anything else, Jenna? Any, any, anything for Jenna? Question, comment, uh, what do you think?
So there, um, we're done with this labor team, um, and we do not have any, you know, program in lines or anything for this year, maybe. They're actually changing our process again for renting, um, but they haven't given us much detail on that yet, but they, um, they, they want us, they said next funding cycle, they will want us to use this new process, and they said the new process starts in February. So that tells me that it will be at least February, March, until we have program in the line.
But in general, you think we're gonna have a, a.
We will, and it's gonna be pretty similar to.
Anything, anybody else, anything for Jenna? I have one, one thing that we forgot to bring up, and that would be to congratulate you on your appointment as the district conservations.
Yeah. Oh, really? I think her education came in here from two ninety-nine.
Yeah, so she was up here camping, you know, so that she could, she could work.
Well, it was kind of funny because when I was working in two thousand and eight as a school comp, my very first day, it was the twenty-first. My very first official day this time was the day of car fires.
Wow, so causal relationship. Wow, so causal relationship. No job changes for him. Okay, so, nothing else for Jenna, so we've got Nick and Kelly, so you guys can kind of rock your decision.
I have, I'm staying on. Since June, the RCD has got quite a few fairly exciting projects, and I'm going, it's kind of a wide breadth of things, and it's relatively short. The district has now a automatically renewing agreement with the county to do GIS support work, which will continue until such times we both keep that appropriate, which is great for us because it continues what I've been doing for the past twenty-three years, and I actually, GIS is very capable. And actually, just to speak to two other things real quickly, had to do with the campus committee. My technical, well, my new GIS manager basically is going to be taking on a new project of trying to model locations for roads in general, but trespass roads specifically, so this will be an interesting sort of exercise for him to use actually at the user conference, the GIS user conference, the big one that's held internationally down in San Diego every year, and spoke among the developing teams for doing imagery analysis, and they've worked out a plan to be able to possibly put that together, so that'll be interesting to see what he comes up with in regard to that.
What question? So, that's predict where roads might be?
Not to predict where they might be, but take current imagery, because the county is also considering contracting with a company called Digital Globe, getting live updates from satellites of the whole county to address sort of this issue. Has to do with certification and a number of other things, but it will be broader than just, you know, certification on private grounds, it will actually be taking into consideration growths that are happening, you know, across the landscape, so, and it's what is existing right now, based on, you know, the digital improvement that's being pulled down, I think on a monthly basis. So, so that'll be an interesting project to see how that turns out. We have recently received and signed an agreement with Shasta Trinity National Forest to about a little over four hundred thousand dollars of roadwork in Helena and Buckfire areas, which is mostly a rehab project, as replacing colors and all that kind of thing, beyond the immediate emergency funding that was provided through the bare process. The Cow Fire have a project that is hazardous fuels production line. Believe that this one, I've probably spoken to you about it, it's also a little over four hundred thousand dollars that's now been signed by me and is waiting for execution. That one is a fairly broad-based treatment prescription that's going to be happening primarily in Lewiston, Northlake, and Johnson City, Weaverville areas.
Is that a private land?
That is almost exclusively private land, yeah, and it follows C D P P recommended projects in those areas.
So, am I going to link to, for example, Weaverville to the, to the stuff that Sally talked about?
Partly, yes. There's also a one hundred thousand dollar project that's coming out that's all exclusively trail-related through Caltrans, Caltrans, it's a transfer, like an alternate transportation planning grant, basically. So, it's basically Weaver Basin Trails, Trinity by Park, and just general trails that'll be happening probably into next year, well, starting next year, I should say. There's also an O H V, California Department of State Parks, rec, O H V grant that's for Gimmell Road Ecoms and Noxious Weed Surveys that's going to be happening down in sort of like the area of Gimmell, I believe, is kind of east of.
Right, Catalavon?
Yes, exactly. Noxious weeds surveys, it's the first time that we've actually had survey, like weed survey funding, especially through O H V. This is a, we're kind of excited about, because that's in the, of our departments. That's a two hundred eighty-six thousand dollar project. Education outreach, we just got refunded through the Trinity River Restoration Program. Continue a lot of the, news layers against like the flows that happen downriver, something like that. And the State Water Resource Control Board, I've now signed also and waiting for execution, a, their timber fund project, which is going to be a lot of work that's going to be done, I believe, primarily on private lands along county roads, again, sort of in Northlake area, middle Trinity, and we, some of that's spilled over to Subport and the Northside area, but treating county roads that have been sort of neglected over time, just to be fuel breaks essentially, a lot of roads. Questions?
Is that a funding for that inventory contract? What do you do with, with the?
So, they'll be getting, you know, we've been reliant on the National Agricultural Inventory Program photography that's been coming out about once every two years. The last round that they've done, this is a USPA product, it's really distributed, and it's a product that has been updated about once every two years. The last round of that was from twenty sixteen. They'll be, they're probably flying that now, be processing it next month, available in October, but this particular product is done by satellite, it's done on demand, essentially work by contract, and because they're wanting to have much more access to track where people are growing, whether it's private lands or not, due to certification, they feel like they have funding to be able to pay for that, which is a very expensive product. So, they'll, it'll be a county-wide layer of inventory that's basically updated, my understanding is monthly, so that they can be observing what's happening around, basically, throughout the county.
When you say they?
The county's planning department.
So, they'll go to the planning department?
Yes.
And then they'll go for illegal roads on private property, and also highlight the ones that are on Forest Service?
Yes.
And act on it?
Well, that's the, yeah, that's, so, and it has to do with, that's, that's where the enforcement comes in, and so, yeah, that's, that's basically code enforcement, correct.
And so, are they, they are aware of this, what you're doing, and are involved in?
They're the ones that suggested it, and my, my manager, GIS manager, has been talking with their, their code enforcement planner, a planner, about doing this, so, yes, they're very much aware of this, this is not just something we decided to do. Yes.
So, you'll have access to that information? That's good.
Yes, I mean, stewards of their county's data, yes, we have all access to that. Carol?
And it's just kind of penis, but I want to sort of like the movement, and so, Trinity Center volunteered a grant for funding from the Kelway Fire Foundation, that was AGP climate change field funding, so, those kind of like climate change proposals, the office that, the, it was a, but essentially it pays for us to eat food for two weeks to do fuel reduction power, so, it's fifty-five, four hundred dollar grant, but it was nice and fun, and I would say it encouraged us to look at that kind of project. It was very welcome to see by the foundation because, you know, exactly, they're going to do the work, you know, the sure, you know, we need to, we need a great project, and very committed problems.
And that was actually great because the P G and E grant that we had applied for earlier this year, which was mitigation kind of grant, we suspect largely went to Sonoma County and Napa and all that stuff. We, you know, we were asked and encouraged to put together a proposal to do that work, which was a continuation of work that we had done primarily in P G and E ground, you know, down river, which was essentially solar and Hawkins Bar area. They didn't accept that particular grant, but this one is good because it actually is something that any B F D could have actually applied for, and, you know, it was, you came to us and asked that, and us, it was something we really want to take on, so thank you for everything, so it was. If that window of opportunity closed now at this point?
This year.
This year, but do you expect it to go around next year? And that didn't have to apply to P G and E service services. Yeah, I mean, that was, to kind of speak to that, also part of the Cow Fire, had, Trinity County had their fuels production. Weaverville, B F D is actually going to have, you know, will be channeling money to their crews to do work, you know, in the basin, also primarily focused on these sites as far as I know, because we're starting to do some work. Current grant that we have in the Pioneer Road area, so to make fuel production sort of that area there, which is a lot more channrel and oak and stuff like that, where that interface is happening between the front end and the mountainside there, so.
Thank you. So, as far as current work, fuels work goes, we've got three six-person crews doing the fuel reduction around the county and one mastication crew, so they're working in that river, they're working in South Fork Trinity, it's mostly shaded fuel breaks and timber stand improvement work on projects that we all talked about on, on public lands, and then also some private land work, Joint Chiefs, as well as some small private land or property thinning and fuel reduction work. Far as new funding goes, same programs that our CD received funding through the California Fire Safety Council, and then the Cow Fires, new greenhouse gas production fund, funded fire prevention grants, local place, state responsibility area, the funded grant program that's now coming out of the greenhouse gas production fund, and you all are getting charged the S R A, you may have noticed if you're a property owner, but the Cow Fire basically in the state backfilled that funding pool to continue doing that kind of work out of the auction revenues, and so, we got between the two somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars maybe, that'll be spent over two-year period in and around A-Port primarily. I think one of those is actually more flexible than that in terms of being able to spend some other weekends, but I actually don't have the details, so I can try to, try to provide that in the future. Ongoing funding through the greenhouse gas production fund, forest health program grant that we got that was basically matched to the last Joint Chiefs funding, or most of the first year of that funding, will be funding available through next year as well, Shasta Trinity through a collections agreement, spending that money on contracts to do work on the Westside Plantation Thin, so the non-commercial components of Westside Plantation Thin, and also the middle A-Port, commercial, pre-commercial thinning work, so, and some of it actually I think on the post-two thousand eighteen, has to treat work, so basically keeping roads open after the-two thousand fifteen fires. Now, then, First Forty Eight aside, we're letting contracts, or a couple of contracts for fuel reduction work on the non-commercial parts of the First Forty Eight, so there's going to be a timber component, they'll be thinning, they'll keep some receipts, they'll spend some of that money to do the parts that don't have timber. Part of that Cow Fire money is also paying for the parts that don't have timber, and so, large shed's a group who do some of that work, might do some of that work, and definitely private contractors do some of that work, we're going to try and target that at small contractors in Southern Trinity, and then look at a larger as well, some more labor intensive work, so, I'll just go to that.
Any questions for Nick? So, as I listen to both of them, I think it is a really good reminder to me that that Joint Chiefs kind of proposal that we approved as a concept, that the funding they have for working on primarily on private land would be pretty critical, in-kind or match, kind of to, to kind of make that proposal pretty attractive.
Oh, could I add one more thing, actually? Because, because it's kind of timely, you know, we'll have a September meeting, I know still, but we'll be doing prescribed burning in your basin, in the A-Port basin, Southern Trinity, on private land and on public land in partnership with Forest Service, probably starting in October, if you ever can, or makes that as useful, so.
Okay.
Okay, so there you go, so, we may need burning.
Okay, so we're kind of getting to the backside of our agenda. So, this is an opportunity for public comment. Diane?
Okay, this is stuff many, many years ago, but I think maybe this is the time to really put it into action. The county has never really formally invoked coordination with our federal agencies so that we can have a seated at table, same level, the same authority, instead of us being second in, you know, down there, like, oh, please, baying, stop baying, there are several counties that have done this, in New Mexico, Arizona, where they did an impasse with their forest supervisor, said, no, it's going to be like this, and they said, okay, I think we need to do that so we can get our program of work done. I, I think it's the time, if we have this kind of supervisor that is not going to, we're going to have to marinate him so that he's, he gets to believe that the program of work that we have now proposed, and for years now, he get underway, and it's not getting underway like Six Rivers, which is just, if that doesn't hit you in the head, I don't know what does, then our board supervisors has to go coordination and say, all right, it's time now, this is what we want done, period, let's get it done. Happy formally invoke coordination, it's in the book with very bad, there's a formal process to do it, we can even, you know, contact supervisors in the other counties that were very, very successful in doing it, and then actually they did that, the federal agencies never looked down on them again, they have always done an evil playing field with them, looked at them, and evil, evil love, not this like your second class, since we need to do this, I know there's importance that they did many years ago, we're supposed to go forward with it, and then it's just laid down, it's, it's very formal, and I think we should do it, I think we should ask them to do it.
Joseph, did you raise your hand up, because Larry's had a question, what have the counties have done that we didn't look at and see?
I'll, I'll get it to you, okay, because I'm, one of them, I think, is Apache, and there's another one.
You know, I would say send to Kelly so that it's distributed, it gets more broadly distributed.
Oh, no, I don't have to be, I'd like to be on the list.
Do you, did you receive?
No, I did not, so, I'll leave you my email, and then that will, I'll provide that so you can see. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I want to address something that's brought up earlier, and various nations, my husband's name, Steve Graves, since he's not here to rebut it.
Yeah, I did, but it wasn't in, in, in a negative way, it's just that that's the way the forester was operated, was they didn't do it.
Well, but that, okay, but I tried to talk, because that's not how it came across. You made it seem like he left something out, which he did not, and I'll do a core defense of what he did, because he could explain it much better, but he's not here, and I would have liked to explain it earlier with some of the other people, especially. people, especially from Six Rivers, were here, but I don't have the opportunity. He got a lot of projects through, and he did it equally, and he did it how he needed to do it. And to do it with maintenance, that it wouldn't have been done, he wouldn't have got all those projects through if he would have tried to push through maintenance, because NEPA doesn't, it's not set up for maintenance. NEPA only lasts for a certain amount of time. And so I'm not sure what kind of rotation you can do in five years, and you need to do, you need to continue it on its own. So I didn't really care for how you put that forward, it may not have been intended to be that way, but that's how it's happened to me, and I appreciate it for all the hard work you did, and all the projects you got.
Well, I will, in front of everybody, apologize for that, because that was not my intention. I worked very closely, day in and day out, with Steve. He got incredible amount of work done, but nobody else was bringing proposals to the RAC.
I understand what you said, and in Gray's.
Me too. That's what I was going to say, that Steve did a great job, he got a lot done, worked closely with the RAC, one of the more successful people that we've worked with in the RAC. Again, my apologies, I was not.
Well, he understands the maintenance part, he would have if he would have.
Right, no, we, I know. And that's why they're not CE's anymore, they wait years to get a piece of NEPA done.
They just, Six Rivers has figured out another way to skin the cat. Dan didn't explain it, but maybe you and he should talk, because he can explain to you what they're doing, because it's a, it's a new way of characterizing NEPA that allows them to come back and do work.
Tom Hall.
I would just like to add in that I think it's so fantastic that Six Rivers is really using all of the contributions that the Blackwood have so much work to gather. And I don't usually say stuff like this, but I'm really ashamed of truly, has to truly down in force for not saying this, because we've worked so hard for so long. And it seems like most of what we learned on Forestry is not happening for us.
Anybody else on the public side? If not, silviation team, do we have anything in particular other than building in the Neva? Do you have anything else to bring up? Dick, do you have anything?
Others, I'd bring up the WKRP project, some bar engraved project, just about signed to.
Oh, I don't understand, they were around the block here or something. And we're hoping they'll be part of that meeting, no collaboratives in, there aren't really a lot of them.
So.
Yeah, actually, I want to do, Kyle Rogers, and it was a gentleman that we were speaking of, that's actually, that's, that's going to be happening in early part of November, likely.
Ladies, I'm sorry.
That meeting is actually going to be held, they're trying to get it set up for Indian Creek Lodge, and it's going to basically be bringing representative collaborators all through the Northern California here, specifically to go on collaborative projects, field trips, to look at work that we've been doing here as a sort of inspiration and a way to network with other collaborative members, and talk about how master stewardship agreements work, how the collaboratives function, how they interface with agency folks, all that kind of stuff. So when that gets finalized, we'll be distributing certain information about that, and hoping that, you know, plenty of our collaborative will actually be there to attend that.
So you say you're going to post all this?
Yeah. Yeah, when it gets finalized, yeah. It'll be a two-day thing with field trips and discussion and all that kind of stuff.
You can say you were fine, I heard you said free dinner for everybody.
So, yeah, be looking out for that, I think it's going to be, it'll be after our October meeting, like.
After the October, so. Likely, at this point, originally it was going to be before conflicts like the clam.
And that's the thing that brought it up, is that WKRP, they weren't going to be able to attend time-wise, the weeks before the next collaborative, so they're trying to get them to evolve for that, so they can talk about that specifically. And right now, they, it was like the fifth and sixth of November, but it's not my last year.
Okay, so agenda building, so things that I have written down, and I don't know, when I'm doing the meeting thing up here, I'm not really good about writing notes down, so need to know what we're putting on the agenda for October, that this group wants to have put on. So, I heard, we talked about detailed reporting on the whole joint, the current Joint Chiefs, and a report on what we, what is being submitted for the 2019 Joint Chiefs. I heard Marad giving a presentation, discussion at the October meeting.
Inviting the new seats for.
Inviting them to Six Rivers, we should be, you know, making sure that Six Rivers Forest Supervisor is invited to come and kind of introduce himself the way Scott did in June.
Master.
What's that?
Master.
And master stewardship agreements, you know, it'll be not as great as we, if we had the meeting with other collaborators first, but we'll put together as best we can some sort of presentation and discussion about that. Is there, are there other items that the group wants on the agenda that I didn't, that I didn't write down?
I would like just a brief response from Representative Puffin to be heard by anyone here. From, because Larry was going to give.
Oh.
To him.
Well, this isn't officially from the collaborative, I'll get him to respond to your group.
Okay, but it was brought up here, so I would like it to be acknowledged.
Okay, I'm not sure what the agenda item is.
So that was the, his bill for the.
So there was, I mean, again, I missed June, but I thought there was a fairly.
Robust discussion.
And no, that didn't make any.
No vote and no statement that ever occurred that said the majority of people supported or didn't support.
So I'm just trying to, you know, if there's going to, maybe we're going to need to vote on some of these agenda items in the past. So I'm just not sure what wording is, is it just, I mean, is it just supposed to send us a response? Send who a response? And because we didn't, I mean, this group didn't generate this, I'm just trying to figure out what to be asking.
Well, just for public purposes, in this room, over A-Port.
So at the next public comment time, I'll give you whatever response I get.
I want to be here for you.
Said, I'll give you whatever response I get.
I see what you mean, thank you.
Would it be better if you just submit these to John Vinkle, his local staff person, and that's out that you have access to the Congressmen, and you can respond to his field report?
Um, Larry said he was fine.
Can you just try and get that, John? Okay. Okay.
That seemed like a lot of reading.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, maybe, you know, we're barely get through these things. Those are some pretty hefty discussions, and then our next meeting is in December, so we've got more meetings to come. So, Dan, you were going to.
That was on the, Mr. Williams' presentation, giving his presentation, the black horses, the black horses that may be killed soon, I mean, there is a time issue. They're about to be a resource, are there real black horses, the special genetics are about to be killed, there's solutions, they need a solution for our forests, our fuel levels.
So I'm, so to kind of get through this, I'm going to take each of these items and kind of do the official formal, get a vote to either add it to the agenda or not, I think. So, not in any order of my preference, but the presentation on, from Marad and or his coworker, on cannabis on public lands.
And what the collaborative can do.
And what the role of the collaborative would be in that effort. So everybody in favor of that on the agenda, hands up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. I know that. We know the board, and there are a few of you here.
Ronald doesn't have to do the math.
Somebody from DUD's got it, is there more math?
Oh, I hate math.
Okay, so that is on the agenda. So, the Joint Chiefs, the Joint Chiefs propose the old, existing and the future, you know, uptake discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
That one could be important and needy, but I don't know why it would take very long.
I don't think it will either, but I usually kind of jot down for myself before these meetings, five minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, I'm wrong every time. That's why it's something to talk about.
Could that, is not that information be sent out by paper?
Yeah, we'll get, whatever we've got, we'll get out ahead of time, you know. It's just sometimes, especially from the agencies getting it ahead of time, you know, is, you know, when they come here and put it on the table, you know, before the meeting, because they're, you know, just getting, you have other priorities, but we'll do our best. Marad, okay, so the other would be the.
Master stewardship.
Master stewardship agreements, so we want to, we want a discussion on master stewardship agreements, all in favor, say yes, put your hands up. About like the same, same number, okay? So master stewardship agreements.
Is this trying to get the regional person here that can.
Okay, and figure out what we, what that, whether, they said the regional person quit.
There's other grants and agreements.
But other grants, I mean, they know, they know this stuff, you know, Nick.
Now, if I were to take the time to compile several master stewardship agreements, and some case studies that people have gotten, both either from this region or elsewhere, will people read them? Should I take the time to do that before the meeting, or is it better to just present information at the meeting?
Bear in mind that it's 12, and you went, I think it was 50 pages.
It's a lot, I mean, there's a, it's a lot, like, the background materials are, every agreement is 50 pages, some of the project agreements, 18 pages.
One or two.
One or two.
And whatever, whatever Six Rivers has done.
Master stewardship.
We have one with all the members of the WKRP project.
So we just want to see you to provide that.
Maybe we can just share my three examples that seem most relevant to.
That one might be a little bit different, because it does include everything from tribal governments to mom profits.
It's okay, I mean, we just want to see what's up with that.
Yep, we got.
Barry, if you can, because I got some of that circular, around the room, ask to talk. Yes, maybe if you can send it to some of us, I'm requesting, just send it in a PDF file.
Yeah.
It'll go to Kelly, it makes me think of.
Just think about how deep to go. You know, there's dozens of, we've got three, it's like two or three examples, it's going to be good.
Okay, so then the other suggestion, which was from Diane, who's a member of the.
Six Rivers.
What's that?
Six Rivers.
Yeah, I think, I guess we can vote on that. I mean, you want to see the Six Rivers Supervisor, everybody.
I'll get Ted.
You're getting here.
He's just, two-second background, he's been a ranger on the clam.
It was in the newspaper.
Did they have that on there? Even about the WO?
We got, we got, we got, you got it. Okay, so the last agenda item, which makes me think of the Rolling Stones, wild horses, right? So those in favor of.
I think you should turn that agenda item as vegetation management with livestock, because I would like to add something to that besides horses.
Okay.
Whiskey Town had a lot of.
Okay.
Doing that.
So they're going to, you know, having, starting to think of Rolling Stones and black horses. Anyway, so livestock, vegetation management.
So you're talking wilderness only, or cross.
I think probably not just wilderness.
Because she was talking wilderness.
Yeah, she was talking horses and wilderness, I think her dog.
I'm talking about the forest.
Marad, Marad.
Yep.
So are these people raising their hands because you're supportive of it, because you have a question? In favor, ready to raise your hands, or is it in favor of that agenda?
We're going to ask someone to come give a presentation about horses, all I mean.
Well, it's deer, it's encompassed here, it has deer herds as well, it's all encompassed.
Okay, all right, so. We'll figure out.
Someone to do other livestock, I think we should.
Yeah. I want to say that the life long interest of the Alpines, I think the idea of introducing wild horses along the Alps is about the dumbest thing I've ever heard. The notion of packers taking their livestock into the backcountry and having some wild herder come in and gather up their stock while they're grazing, and running off to who knows where, is, I think, a dangerous, dangerous topic, that's what we're going to be seriously considering.
Karen.
Well, I would add is, that some person who's tried to penalize livestock, eating nominated plants, and they go on the Alps and put out seeds.
There you go.
Having it done for a heeder, so it becomes a court issue that.
So, so as opposed to having the discussion, appropriate or not.
Presentation.
Just have the, have the presentation more broadly to include livestock as a tool for vegetation management, right? Not just, not just to move. Everybody in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay, I'm ready to kind of this time. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. But I don't think that, I don't think that makes it onto the agenda, we'll see how many of you are against. Okay, how many are against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10, four, six, again, 10. Okay.
Ronald doesn't have to do the math, he didn't.
Okay, anything, anything else for the, for the good of the order and the group?
Question for December?
Kelly.
So it's a very Friday, December, that's February.
Well, we'll have Christmas for the world.
Really?
You just say we're bringing Christmas?
Yeah, I always bring, I do, I mean, that's one.
Maybe a week.
I brought, I brought some food, right? So are you suggesting possibly moving it?
Like a week earlier?
A week earlier, the 14th. Thoughts on that? Last time I was in the meeting, when I first started all this, people pummeled me and beat up on me for like, changing a meeting day. And that was during 2015, so if it's, if it's what the group thinks, working, you probably have a better shot at some federal folk.
I'm acting in December, so I'll be here.
Sooner, sooner than later in December. What's that, December 14th? So we're going to, we're going to publish that, and so people can make sure that's on their, huh? Want to vote? Everybody in favor of December 14th instead of 21st?
Saying opposition to this stuff.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
My birthday is the 6th of December.
Oh, how great.
Actually, I support. Actually, hi.
Well, you're a sexy.
Because I strongly urge, strongly urge you to have a vote. So 14th, raise hands if you think you can support that. Okay, it looks like a cross, no, you can't do the.
Not paying attention.
Arnold. My personal idea, which I've stated before, is that facilitation team needs to, and I can, have a right and obligation to sort of manage the agenda work. We're guessing two months before the real thing. We don't know how much time, we don't know if the right people are going to attend, so I think this is good to give you a good idea of what we're interested in right now and I think you should regard it as, just don't have.
Yeah, we, we, we're adaptive, we adapt as we see the need, to the extent we can.
We usually also put out, you know, like a prior, to the agents, folks that try and solicit any kind of top hole, lake breaking, you know.
I thought that was a secret between us. By the way, can you tell me that man who's to kind of keep the. Look now, but there's no secret handshake.
I like the strong idea that someone's going to come out and get you, you know, I wouldn't say erase the master stewardship for me, the way you could be inside your work, because it's a real conversation, we can't tell.
Right, I appreciate it.